Under the cover and then piped out for use or flaring. I'll now turn back to Mike Pagetra to continue with this public meeting.
Great, thank you Christine. At this time, if you have a question, please use the WebEx Raise Your Hand function, or type your question into the chat question and answer box. If you are on a phone line, you can press star three, which will raise your hand, and our facilitator will unmute your microphone and we will call on you. We will get to as many questions as possible. This is critically important for the audio clarity of your question. Please turn down any speakers that you may have that can create feedback. If there is significant feedback on your line, we may need to mute your line and come back to you at a later time.
Hello, what is going to be done with the waste once it's processed through the digester? The waste that's left over?
Thank you for your question. This is Christine Lawson again. As I mentioned, the waste from the digester then flows to the secondary storage, and then is land-applied in accordance with their permit and their approved nutrient management plan for nutrient utilization by the crops.
Okay, thank you.
Hello. Yeah, my question is, what benefit does this bring to the community surrounding these farms? How will it benefit the residents who live there?
Thank you for your question. Just to review the application itself, the Division of Air Quality is charged with looking at every application that's submitted to us and ensuring that in the process of going through the application that the facility can comply with all of the associated rules and laws that are applicable to that facility. That's the process that we're going through, and we are taking comments and questions on the permit application and the draft permit itself at this time.
Mary, you're able to speak now.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. I got a question. Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, please go ahead with your question.
Yes, why was? I'm asking a question, why was Duplin County and Sampson County picked for this facility?
You want me to speak after that person that just spoke?
Yes, if you could hold for just a second. Again, this is Michael Pagetra, and the facility submitted an application to construct the facility in the location presumably due to the proximity to the farms that would be supplying the biogas to the gas processing facility. The next question was?
This is Mary again, and my question was similar to his question. Since it had to be designed to benefit the community, again, why was Duplin and Sampson chosen? And why didn't this go before the county commissioners versus letting a town decide on the location? Because it seems when I go to meetings, the county commissioners are not aware of the biogas project, and it's been going on for such a long time. I'm not opposed to it, it's just that I think that the community, the citizens of Duplin and Sampson County should be involved, because I've followed the project since 2016, 2017, when we had the North Carolina Environmental Justice Network, the Water Keepers Alliance, the Crystal Coast Water Keepers Reach, all of these organizations were, they did a, you know, a biogas position statement, and in that statement, the consensus was that as long it's going to help the community and it doesn't impose on our livelihood and our health, and you're asking for air permit, so I don't understand, why would you put the gas lines down and all those things and we not know what it's all about? I thought we were getting natural gas, and then I find out that we're getting biogas to help five or six family farms, and I'm all for that, because a lot of my family work for the family farms, and we needed something to offset the spray and the lagoons overflowing, killing our fish and all of those things. But I just don't understand why we weren't notified in a different manner than just at a town's meeting where it was okay to start this project in Duplin and Sampson County.
Yes ma'am, thank you for the question, and to be clear, we and the D Department of Environmental Quality and the Division of Air Quality, we support community engagement and all forms of local government engagement with the community and information sharing. That's the reason why we're doing the public meeting tonight and the public hearing as well. We want to share information with you, we want to share all the information that we can regarding the project, regarding the permit application, as well as the draft permit. You'll hear later, Ray Stewart, our hearing officer will tell you that a public meeting and hearing isn't required, but we decided that it was in the best interest of the public to have one. I can't speak to the county officials, I would encourage you to speak with them regarding the project. And just to be clear, the Division of Air Quality is a governmental regulatory agency. We don't decide on projects as far as, you know, picking where they're located or picking, you know, whether a project applies for an application or not. What we do is we process the applications that facilities submit to us, and in the process of going through those applications and drafting a permit, we ensure that they will comply with all federal and state rules. So we didn't decide to put the facility in a particular location, but we ensured that in the location that they were, that they're applying for, that they could comply with all local state rules, ambient air quality standards, et cetera. So I did get a question that was sent to me. Let's see, can someone please speak to where the biogas is intended to go? Where and by whom will it be consumed? So our understanding and reviewing the permit application, as well as learning about the biogas process, is that once the methane is separated from the raw biogas, that methane is then injected into the pipeline, the gas pipeline, and it's effectively natural gas at that point that could be used by industrial customers or residential customers. So the, you know, the purpose of the process is to capture the methane that would otherwise be released into the atmosphere, and then to inject it into the pipeline for beneficial use in other locations, be it residential or commercial. That would also, our understanding is that that would then also offset other ways to derive methane from various mines and such. Okay, Rahat, do we have another question?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, yes, I got another question. I was a gentleman asking why were Duplin County picked? Now, I live in Kenesaville. Keel Patrick has a facility down on Highway 50 already. It smells like eggs, I mean, the community that lives there, it stinks to high heaven already. So what I'm asking you is, why was Duplin County and Sampson picked? Because we have enough of those facilities here already. I mean, the community is rinked with this farm waste. I mean, the whole community, I mean, we just stick of it. So what I'm saying is, you can't get rid of waste. I mean, you might get rid of it at one end, but the other end, you still got waste. I mean, the smell is going to be there. So I'm just saying, I mean, these facilities you're putting up, you're going to have smell on it. I mean, you know, if you get one of one thing, the other end is going to be the same thing. So I'm just saying, I mean, the Duplin County, I don't know about Sampson, but Duplin County is just tired of the smell, flies, mosquitoes, or whatever. So I'm just saying, you put out here by Carol's, I mean, I see where you're putting it at. So what I'm asking you is, why was Duplin County and Sampson County picked?
Yes, sir.
I talked with Jimmy Dixon, I'm going to talk with all the officials here, I'm going to talk with them, because it doesn't make sense for you keep building stuff here in that area. I mean, I'm 58 years old, I got children that's coming up behind me. I mean, where we live, we just won't have, they won't have a future with this smell of this hog waste. So I don't care what you do with it, if you get rid of one problem, the other problem is going to come on the other end. So that's what I'm complaining about tonight.
Yes, sir, I understand, and the, you know, our understanding is that primarily the smell associated with hydrogen sulfide is much more of the smell that you may pick up in the process of going through and cleaning the biogas and then combusting the tail gas. That hydrogen sulfide, rather than being released to the atmosphere directly, is converted to sulfur dioxide. So there's an oxidation process. Prior to that oxidation process, there's also an iron sponge that's effectively a control device that absorbs hydrogen sulfide. So in this process, the facility is going to be reducing the amount of hydrogen sulfide that is in the gas itself, and then oxidizing that gas so that the hydrogen sulfide, the more pungent smell, is then converted to sulfur dioxide. As you heard from Dean Carroll earlier, they are taking emission limitations and through control devices, meeting those emission limitations. As far as location in Duplin County, I heard you say, and I'm sure you didn't intend it, I understand it's probably just a way of saying things, but I heard you say, why did you pick Duplin County? I just want to be clear again that as a regulatory agency, we didn't pick a specific location for this facility. Facility picked the location, submitted an application, and we went through and we're processing that, and that's part of this discussion today as far as the location. My understanding again is that it's due to the proximity to the farms, and that's why the location was chosen. See, what other questions do we have, Rahat?
Yes, Kay followed by Maxwell, and please, if you've already asked a question, please press star three on your keypad to unraise your hand or use the unraise hand function if you're using a computer. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Kay, can you hear me?
Yes, Kay, I sure can.
Yeah, I have a question about the number of farms. There were certain farms that were identified in the permit, but does this limit the project, or will other farms participate?
Yes, ma'am, good question. So, you know, the question is, will other farms participate? For this specific project, the farms have been listed as 19 farms that would provide a gas. In general, what the Division of Air Quality is focused on is the gas processing unit, which is designed, and the specifications around the design limit the operation to 1,200 square feet, standard cubic feet per minute of gas that can be processed. And so the number of farms and the number of digesters are linked to the amount of gas that can be processed in the biogas processing unit. The, we did receive one other question about what's the basis for assuming that the upgrading facility would process at most 1,200 standard cubic feet per minute of gas? That's based on the permit application, which is available on our website, and the design of the facility. There's, based on the sizing of the components and the gas upgrading equipment itself, that's the maximum that the system could process. All right, Rahat, we have some other questions?
Yes. I'm Maxwell?
Yes, hi, can you hear me okay, Michael?
Yes, Maxwell, how are you doing tonight?
Good, how are you doing? Thank you for holding this hearing. I would sort of follow up on some of the other questions that a few residents of Duplin and Sampson County have been raising about why the facility was chosen. And I appreciate and understand that as a regulatory agency, you're reviewing the applications that have come in, and for a private entity that has said, we would like to put this in this specific county or these two specific counties, perhaps something that you could maybe illuminate for some of the listeners here who are wondering why this private entity is able to do that? Could you tell us a little bit about how, as a permitting agency, would be able to review and decide, let's say, for example, that 1,000 biogas, different private entities were looking for this sort of setup, that you could say, that's too many, we can't have you here because we already have so many facilities? Assuming that, you know, they all meet all the scientific regulatory quotas, this, that, and the other, DAQ, DEQ, water, air, at what point, you know, is it that there's too many in one particular area? Could you maybe just share a little bit about your role that you can or can't play in that sort of macro evaluation of looking at how multiple permits fit together in a certain geographic area?
Yeah, so thank you so much for the question. That's a very in-depth discussion, a very in-depth answer that we would need to go through for that. I think we could start off with part of the question slash answer that you provided, that we start by looking at the individual facilities themselves, as we did in this case. And so maybe we could start with that, where when a facility does apply for a permit, you know, we evaluate all of the state and federal rules that they're subject to, and we include all those state and federal rules in the permits. We may require testing, we may require record-keeping, reporting, tremendous amount of information that the facility has to provide to us, you know, semi-annually, quarterly, annually, et cetera. We go out and we do inspections of those facilities. We ensure that they would meet the National Ambient Air Quality Standards in cases and our toxic standards as well. So that's the first question, how we look at one individual facility. Now, when we talk about multiple facilities in a location, you know, that is, again, something that can occur. We see that quite often, you know, if we have an industrial park or an area of the state that has more industrial activity, there are multiple facilities one after another, and we would evaluate how all those facilities may interact with one another. In this particular case, you know, the gas processing unit gets the gas from the various farms in the area. So as far as having multiple gas processing units next to each other, you know, if that, if we were to receive applications to that extent, we would do evaluations on what the effects of those facilities would be one next to another. Okay, received a question on the chat, and I'm picking up a little bit of an echo. If you are, if your microphone is on, if you could turn that off, I would appreciate it. Okay, received a question, how much CO2 is planned to be released during flaring? And follow-up, CO2 or methane? So that's a good question, and that's related to greenhouse gases. And, you know, one of the things that we're doing as we evaluate this project is we're trying to get a better understanding of the overall reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. One, if you consider that some greenhouse gases are going to be emitted uncontrolled currently in the current farm operations, and those gases would now be captured and routed to the gas conditioning unit, and then the methane would be injected into the pipeline. We're looking at the potential for a reduction in some greenhouse gases if we look at that specific operation. One of the things that can be said is that methane is a much higher greenhouse gas, a much stronger greenhouse gas, has an effect on the atmosphere in terms of warming, 25 times that of CO2, so just the mere conversion of methane to CO2 is a reduction in greenhouse gas equivalents. But again, the purpose of the project is to capture the methane and to inject it into the pipeline for beneficial use. Okay, Rahat, do we have another question?
Yes, okay, so Kathy followed by Blakely, followed by Maya, followed by Jamie. Go ahead, Kathy.
Thanks, I put a question in the chat, which I haven't heard, so I'm going to ask that again, and then I had a second question. The question in the chat was, are there any either new pollutants or increased levels of pollutants in the material at the end that will be sprayed over the land? So, you know, the pollutants that'll be sprayed. And then the second question was, you know, this is an air quality hearing, is there going to be, will there be additional hearings on this project? For example, for water quality, for the location of the pipeline, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay, Kathy, thank you for your question. This is Christine Lawson with Division of Water Resources. Regarding your question about new or increases in pollutants, there will be no increase in the nutrient load going out onto the land application field. There will be no additional constituents in the effluent that's land-applied. So there's the answer to that question. And again, they still must follow their permit and their nutrient management plan so that nutrients are applied at no greater than agronomic rates. So rates that the crop, receiving crop will take up and utilize. As for your second question regarding Division of Water Resources, we do not have plans at this time for any additional public hearings on the animal feeding operation permits.
Okay, who is next, Rahat?
Yes, Blake, Blakely, followed by Ms. Hut, followed by Jamie.
Okay, and Blakely, just to let you know, we do have, as of 4 o'clock this afternoon, when the registration ended, we had 109 people registered. So we are going to start the hearing at 6:40, so let's see what we could do to answer this next couple of questions.
Sure, I'll try to rephrase, thank you. This is Blakely for the brand. I was curious, I'm just following up on the last question. Ms. Lawson indicated that mountain hog operations are the project, but the DWR has only received major modification requests for four operations. What's the process for modifying the nutrient management plans for the remaining 15 operations? And what is the timeline for doing that? Thank you.
Blakely, thank you so much for your question. You're right that we've only received four requests for modification. I don't know what the timeline is. We, they, we only review the permits as they're submitted to us, we've only received those four. It's up to the permit holders and their schedule for when they wish to seek modification. No construction can occur until they've received an approval for the major modification for their permit. And the major modification is regarding the construction of the digesters, the modification of the treatment system. The nutrient management plan is a portion of the permit, and they can update the nutrient management plan. For example, if they are modifying the crops that they're going to use, or if they want to modify, they want to add additional fields, those have to be modifications to the plan. But what we're talking about, this permit modification, is regarding the modification to the treatment system itself. And as they come in, we will review those permit applications as well.
Okay, who do we have next, Rahat?
All right. I guess Maya Hut and Jamie Curry? Go ahead.
Hi, this is Maya Hut, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
So I have two questions. The first I typed in the chat, but I'm not sure it went through. And this was in reference to some of the diagrams that you showed in your slideshow earlier. And my question is, in regard to those three out of four farms, where I believe, and I might be misunderstanding this, but I believe that you said that there would be an additional digester constructed. And so my question is, is that digester replacing an existing lagoon? Or is that in addition to the existing lagoon?
Great, thank you for that question, Maya. The new digester doesn't replace any of the existing lagoons. The existing lagoons will now serve as secondary storage for the effluent after being treated in the digester. There will be some additional level of anaerobic treatment in those storage lagoons, but the majority of the treatment will occur in that digester. And you said you had a second question?
Yes, thanks. So my second question is actually in reference to your statement about the risk of new or increased pollutants from the effluent after it's been treated. And I guess my question is that, my understanding is that when anaerobic digestion occurs, the nitrogen concentration increases in that waste, and that that would actually be a higher level of that nutrient. And so I was hoping you could just clarify why you had said that there would be no increase.
Good question. When you have a digester or a covered structure, the ammonia that would otherwise be released to the atmosphere is not. And so there is somewhat of an increase in the concentration in that effluent. Some of it will go off with the gas, some of it stays in the effluent. Now, this effluent will flow from the digester to the existing lagoons where it will be stored uncovered before land application. So the normal amount of ammonia will occur in those existing lagoons. So you would not anticipate any increase in the nitrogen content in the effluent that will be land-applied.
Okay, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, it is now 6:40 PM. We will now start our public hearing on this draft permit due to the number of speakers that have signed up to comment. You are welcome to provide additional questions by calling 919-707-8714 and leaving a voicemail message with your first and last name, contact information, and stating your questions on the proposed permit. At this time, I would like to hand the microphone over to Ray Stewart, our hearing officer for tonight's public hearing. Ray?
Thank you, Michael. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This virtual public hearing is now considered to be open. My name is Ray Stewart, and I am the Regional Supervisor for the North Carolina Division of Air Quality's Winston-Salem Regional Office. I have been appointed to be the Hearing Officer for this public hearing by the Director of the Division of Air Quality, Mike Abrzynski. Several DHP staff are joining me during this hearing. My purpose this evening is to receive comments from those individuals pre-registered to speak at this event for the consideration of the issuance of a new air quality permit to Align RNG LLC for the construction and operation of a renewable gas, or RNP, receiving and conditioning facility and associated air pollution control equipment to be located at 2940 North Carolina Highway 24 West, near Turkey, Duplin County, North Carolina. The Division of Air Quality is conducting this public hearing digitally to allow for public participation while protecting public health under current guidance to prevent the spread of COVID-19. If you're having technical difficulties with WebEx, you can use the chat feature in WebEx to ask questions or seek assistance. I want to thank Rahat Ashik for facilitating this WebEx hearing. The following elected officials have registered to speak. Representative Raymond Smith, North Carolina Agriculture Commissioner Steve Froxler, Senator Norman Sanderson, Senator Brent Jackson. Sanderson, Senator Brent Jackson, and Representative Jimmy Dixon. Other officials may also be in attendance. The North Carolina Division of Air Quality regulations do not require a hearing or comment period for the issuance of this permit. However, due to significant public interest, the Director of the Division of Air Quality has decided to open a comment period and conduct this public hearing to receive pertinent public comments prior to taking final action on this application. The combined comment period for this permit will have been a total of 94 days. In addition to your oral comments tonight, the Division is also accepting comments via mail, electronic mail, and by phone through a voicemail box. The email address is DAQ公眾@ncdenr.gov. The phone number with a voicemail box is 919-707-8714. Copies of the permit application, the permit application review, the draft air permit, and other information are available at the DAQ's Wilmington Regional Office and Raleigh Central Office, and online at the DAQ's website at www.ncair.org. During the 6:00 PM public meeting, Dean Carroll, DAQ Wilmington Office Permit Coordinator, provided a presentation on the draft permit. In order to reduce repeated information and to provide more time for your comments, I am hereby incorporating Dean Carroll's presentation into the hearing record. The order of the events for this hearing are as follows. We will receive comments from those individuals who are pre-registered to speak. This will provide an accurate hearing record. To provide enough time for public comments, this meeting will be conducted in the following manner. All efforts will be made to call speakers in the same order of your registrations. Due to the number of registered speakers, oral statements will be limited to up to two minutes for each speaker in order to hear as many citizens as possible. Likewise, speakers will not be allowed to yield a portion of their allotted two minutes to other speakers. You may still submit full written comments to the DAQ. I will call the names of each of the pre-registered speakers in order, and our WebEx host will unmute the speaker when it is their turn to speak. I will also announce the names of the next speaker in the queue so they can prepare to provide their comments when their names are called to speak. Please do not start speaking until the WebEx host has indicated that your microphone has been unmuted. Your time will begin when the WebEx host has unmuted your microphone. Rahat Ashik, the WebEx host, will keep track of your time, and he will announce when your two minutes have expired. Please respect the time of all who wish to present oral comments tonight by adhering to the time limits and closing your remarks as quickly as possible once time is up. Cross-examination of the person presenting comments, or me, the hearing officer, will not be allowed. However, as the hearing officer, I may ask questions to the presenter for clarification. Questions directed to the Division of Air Quality staff members will not be answered during this hearing. If you have questions for DAQ staff, please contact the staff member, or Zainab Nasif, our Public Information Officer. After receiving comments this evening, the hearing will be closed. However, the period for submitting comments does not close until November 20, 2020, at 5:00 PM. The focus of this virtual public hearing is the presentation of comments related to air quality issues associated with new draft, the new draft air quality permit for the Align RNG facility, and the applicability of air quality regulations. Only relevant air quality comments can be considered in my final recommendations to our Division Director. At this time, we will hear from those people who pre-registered to provide oral comments this evening. When your name is called, the WebEx host will unmute your microphone so that you may provide comments. To ensure our records are complete, please clearly state your name and who you are representing. Your comments will be recorded, so please speak loudly, loudly, and clearly towards your computer's microphone or telephone speaker. Please do not speak until the WebEx host has indicated that your microphone has been unmuted. This next part is critically important for the audio clarity of your comments. Please turn down any speakers that you have that can create feedback. If there is significant feedback on your line, we may need to mute your call and then attempt, and attempt to call you back later. If we call your name but cannot hear you after you have been unmuted, please check to see if you are muted on the WebEx screen on your computer. If you are having audio issues, try a different method of audio connection within WebEx, or use the Call Me feature to have WebEx call your personal telephone. If we still cannot hear you, we will proceed to the next registered speaker, but will call your name at the end of the hearing. I will do my best to pronounce your names correctly and apologize in advance for any errors. As I call on speakers, I will also announce the next speaker so they can be prepared to speak next. We will now begin taking oral comments. Please note, we are calling the names of the speakers in the order that they registered for the public hearing. So this evening, we're going to begin with Ms. Carrie Shields, to be followed by Ms. Amy Epley.
Economic Development Director for Duplin County. The hog industry is a core part of what drives economics in Duplin County. This project will invest an estimated $375 million, generate job creation, and allow our farm families to be more sustainable and thrive. Our hog industry has been hit very hard for the past several years, and again, most recently with our pandemic. When our hog industry suffers, it doesn't impact just our farmers. This impacts the lives of any associating business and industry. Grocery stores where we purchase our food, dealerships where we purchase our work vehicles and equipment, and quality of life for many families, as well as many other impacts to Duplin County and surrounding counties. Duplin County Economic Development supports the approval of the Align RNG application for the necessary air permits for its biogas initiative. Thank you.
Amy, go ahead and make your comments now.
Actually, so thank you, Ms. Shields. Amy Epley is next, to be followed by Starr Jackson.
With James Frunt Community College. Align Renewable Natural Gas RNG is the largest RNG partnership in the nation, with a powerful goal of transforming the future of sustainable energy and agriculture through innovation that begins right here in North Carolina. This is something I'm very proud of. As Director of Customized Training at James Frunt Community College in Kenansville, I'm interested in the economic and workforce development of my community, and am confident in the opportunities Align RNG will bring to the region. Align RNG will help diversify local economies, create new short and long-term jobs, generate additional revenue for family farms, and make hog farming more sustainable. Right now, our farmers desperately need diversified revenue streams, and allowing clean energy businesses like RNG to reinvigorate the hog farming industry will fuel local economies with new investments. Without question, adopting RNG will enrich local farming communities with new economic opportunities that will continue growing in years to come. Investing in RNG is an investment in the health and prosperity of our community. That's why I'm voicing support of approving this air permit for Align RNG. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Epley. The next speaker is Starr Jackson, to be followed by Danielle Koontz.
Starr, go ahead and make your comments now.
My name is Starr Jackson, and I'm the Lead Instructor for the Agribusiness Applied Animal Science and Swine Management Programs at James Frunt Community College. Duplin County is a proud home to a prosperous hog farming industry that provides economic security to many local farmers. Align Renewable Natural Gas RNG will help bolster this key industry by providing much-needed support to our farmers and position Eastern North Carolina as a leader in RNG production. As an instructor of the swine management technology and agribusiness programs at James Frunt Community College in Duplin County, I am heavily invested in the proper management of our hog farming industry and the help and success of our community. The Align RNG project will drive greater economic development and sustainability across the region. The project will encourage diversified growth in our local economy by attracting new business investments to the area and new sources of revenue for local farmers and my students. Additionally, the project will reduce greenhouse gas emissions by capturing methane from hog manure and converting it into clean, sustainable energy that powers local homes and businesses. There is no question in the economic and environmental benefits of Align RNG. I am in support of making Duplin County a leader in RNG production, and therefore am in support of approving this air permit. Thank you.
Okay, Ray, if we could turn on our mic?
Sorry, thank you. Our next speaker will be Danielle Koontz, to be followed by Jennifer Daniels.
One second.
Hello, thank you.
Danielle, you can go ahead and make your statements now.
Okay, thank you. So Sampson County has 22.8% of its residents living in poverty, which is good for being ranked 12 out of 100 counties in our state. On top of having a high poverty rate, our county has always been beleaguered with lots of environmental challenges. One of those challenges has been the landfill that is located in the Snow Hill community. That landfill has caused problems with people's air quality, as well as groundwater, as well as just quality of life. On top of the landfill, we've always dealt with hog farms and the hog farm lagoons, which Smithfield never fixed. These unlined lagoons have caused lots of fecal waste to be poured into our groundwater, our rivers, our lakes, our springs, our wells. And many people do not use the water in their homes because of the hog waste that has slipped into our groundwater, and because of the terrible odor that these hog farms have caused. Smithfield Farms was supposed to fix that problem, but they haven't fixed it. Instead, they're trying to profit from the problem by suggesting that hog pig waste can be turned into a renewable energy. Yet everyone knows that a renewable energy is something that comes organically from the ground. Renewable energy, pig waste fuel, is not renewable energy because pig waste fuel relies on pigs. Therefore, you have to keep having more hogs to create more fuel, which means that there will be more and more and more hogs within the county of Sampson County, and most likely Duplin County, which are the number one and number two places in the world of hog production. Although the North Carolina Senate and Legislature have capped the amount of hog farms we can have in our county, this does seem suspicious that Smithfield is trying to suggest that they can continue to create renewable gas without making sure that there are more hogs.
Ms. Koontz, your two minutes to speak are up. Thank you for speaking this evening. Our next speaker will be Jennifer Daniels, to be followed by Morris Murphy.
Jennifer, you can go ahead and make your statements now.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Jennifer Daniels, and I am a resident in Sampson County. And I'm also a farmer in Sampson County. I'm a Smithfield grower. We have pig nurseries. And we also raise conventional and organic crops. And we have a turkey breeder farm with Prestige. I am calling in today because I care so much about our sustainable future in agriculture. It is our family's livelihood. I did work 17 years with Sampson County Schools, was a principal at Midway Elementary, and before that, I taught and worked as a coach at elementary and middle school level. Now I work full-time on the farm where we do produce hogs, turkeys, and crops, including organic cucumbers and sweet potatoes, which is fertilized by some effluent. North Carolina heavily relies on the strength and sustainability of farmers like myself. We care deeply about producing food and caring for our environment. This RNG project strengthens the connection between agriculture and renewable energy. And as a local farmer, I'm excited about the new opportunities that RNG has to offer for our community. Eastern North Carolina is positioned to become a leader in this RNG production. The project converts existing methane into clean renewable energy, which reduces carbon emissions. This project gives North Carolina farmers and families the opportunity to lead the charge in this new manure management practice that facilitates increased sustainability and invites new renewable energy businesses' investments to our area. The advantages of the Align RNG are clear. Farmers, businesses, and residents will all stand to benefit. Supporting this project is an investment in our community and future. Thank you for this time.
Thank you for speaking, Ms. Daniels. Our next speaker is Morris Murphy, to be followed by David Braden.
Morris Murphy, if you're on a telephone line, could you please go ahead and raise your hand, press star three to indicate to me that, so I may call on you.
I'm assuming this is Morris. Is this Morris? It is.
Okay, go ahead and make your statements now.
Okay, all right. Well, this is Morris. I want to thank you tonight for allowing me to speak and supported the Align RNG and the Renewable Renewable Gas Project in Eastern North Carolina. My family and I are a contract grower for Smithfield. In addition to growing hogs, we also raise turkeys and grow sweet potatoes, cucumbers, and hay on my farm, Triple M Family Farms. Running a family farm requires a lot of hard work and dedication, as you may know, and our family knows very well. We're very happy to provide the safe and high-quality food for American families. We also know that something like this is very essential to our farm and communities in North Carolina. That's why we're always on the lookout for new technologies that can better build systems and operations. Renewable gas is a very rare technology, and we all know that, but it has a very potential not only to improve our family operations, but also to improve communities and all the livestock industry as a whole. By capturing the methane produced on a hog farm and turning it into clean energy, the Renewable Gas Project being built by Align RNG will make a big difference to my family and other family farms. Instead of bearing the operating cost of manure management, we can, will instead benefit from the new consistent revenue stream from the sale of the gas. With that new income, family farms will be able to reinvest in our farms and our local communities. The Align RNG projects will hire North Carolina residents for both construction, permanent jobs, bringing new opportunity to our non-farming families, and fueling our local economy. Through these projects, Align RNG will invest millions of dollars over the next decade to our rural communities, which is very much needed. That is important to me because those investments will bring better economic stability to help preserve the family farming tradition in North Carolina. These Renewable Gas projects provide peace of mind that my farm will be around to pass down to my children, Jennifer and Justin, over the next generation of farmers. I hope the NC DAQ will see how pivotal the Renewable Gas Project is for North Carolina and grant the Align RNG and grant the Align RNG the air permit that it needs. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you for Mr. Murphy for speaking. Our next speaker will be David Braden, to be followed by Woody Brinson.
Hello, my name is David Braden. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight in support of Align RNG. I am a patent attorney with Nixon Pruitt. I'm also an advanced-degree organic chemist with 11 patents in the biofuels and bioplastics fields. Some of these patents that I have involve technology related to using a gas called syn gas that you can make from biogas. You can also make it from biomass, such as crop waste and landfill waste. I also have a patent in the anaerobic digestion area, so I'm very familiar with biogas production. I have practiced law for 23 years. I've also founded or co-founded three biofuel companies. I've always been passionate about renewable energy, and I have a deep interest in natural gas-related, biogas-related fuel. So, something that people don't realize is there's a potential for huge, huge natural gas projects where you can make all kinds of products, methanol, diesel fuel, jet fuel, gasoline, and the like. So, I'm very, very excited that Align RNG is bringing renewable natural gas to North Carolina. As a North organic chemist, I always strive to create greener or inclined-friendly processes, and renewable natural gas definitely fits the bill. Renewable energy is a real, gas energy is a game changer for the clean energy technology for the economy. This is a clear winner for North Carolina, and it's an easy yes for the NC DEQ. I strongly urge you to welcome this incredible technology by granting Align RNG the necessary air permit to complete its first project, and I hope to see renewable natural gas all over North Carolina and converting that into fuels, renewable fuels, to satisfy the green economy. Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Braden. The next speaker is Woody Brinson, to be followed by Van Rogerson.
Woody Brinson, if you would, if you're on the telephone, please go ahead and press star three to indicate to me that you want to speak. I'm assuming this is Woody, go ahead.
Okay, this is Woody Brinson, D-R-I-N-S-O-N. The retired Economic Development Director for Duplin County. I served from July 84 until January of 2008, and therefore had a lot of opportunities to see projects that were proposed to improve the quality of life for our county. Was able to work with Smithfield on many projects while as Economic Development and came to realize they were a very quality company, and have still continued to work with them through the Kingsville Duplin County Chamber of Commerce since my retirement from Economic Development. Also, in the 1990s, served as president and as a member of the Eastern North Carolina Developers Association and got to know officials from Dominion Energy, and also found them to be a very quality company. So, seeing this partnership in Align RNG between these two companies shows me that we've got a good quality company to work with. I would mention that in President-elect Joe Biden's town hall meeting that was held in place of the second presidential debate, that he outlined some comments pertaining to biogas and anaerobic digesters for agricultural waste. Knowing that our president-elect is in favor of this type of project, to me adds quality to the application. I would like to say that during my tenure with Economic Development, there was many projects proposed, but a very little quality. But as I have studied this project by Align RNG, I found it to be a very good potential project to do a lot of good for the industry and to help with our need for natural gas. I thank you for your support of this application by Align RNG. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brinson, for speaking this evening. Our next speaker is Van Rogerson, to be followed by Chad Herring.
Hey, Van, would you please press star three if you're on the telephone to indicate to me your desire to speak? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Van.
Good evening, my name is Van Rogerson. Good evening, my name is Van Rogerson. Okay, I'm ready to go?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Van Rogerson. I'm currently serving as interim president/CEO of NC East Alliance, which advocates on behalf of the businesses and industries of Eastern North Carolina. As a part of that work, I'm here tonight to lend my voice in support of Align RNG and its renewable natural gas projects in North Carolina. Hog farming is a long and proud tradition in Eastern North Carolina. It also is a powerful economic engine, and it's a part of the fabric of our communities, creating jobs, generating tax revenue, and feeding our families. Thanks to Align RNG, family farmers across the region can capture manure from hog, can capture methane from hog manure and turn it into clean energy for area homes and businesses through renewable natural gas. I'm thrilled about renewable natural gas and want to share with you some of the economic benefits it offers Eastern North Carolina. By turning the cost of manure management into a source of income, renewable natural gas provides a new revenue stream for family farmers, allowing them to diversify their business, reinvest in their farms, and participate in a clean energy economy. The development of renewable natural gas projects will inject millions of dollars in investment across Eastern North Carolina over the next decade. These projects will increase new construction opportunities, including many short-term and permanent jobs for North Carolina residents. Renewable natural gas projects will also support and expand the local tax base by increasing property values and generating other fees. As an advocate and champion of economic development in Eastern North Carolina, I'm excited about the opportunities of renewable natural gas technology. It is an economic opportunity for our region and a clear signal that Eastern North Carolina is on the move. With renewable natural gas, we're embracing innovation and progress, and we're using it to benefit our communities. So, I urge the Department of Environmental Quality to approve and grant the necessary air permit for Align RNG to complete their first project in North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogerson. Our next speaker will be Chad Herring, to be followed by Joel Porter.
Hey, Chad, if you are, okay, I see you are, you've already. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, my name is Chad Herring. I'm a third-generation farmer raising hogs and growing coastal Bermuda hay on my family farm in Manale, North Carolina. I also serve as Executive Director of NC Farm Families. I support Align RNG and renewable natural gas projects because the benefits of renewable natural gas will support family farmers now and for generations to come. For me, support for Align RNG's project is a no-brainer. Agriculture is one of the biggest economic drivers in our state, and North Carolina is one of the richest states in biogas resources in the nation. By connecting our hard-working family farmers to renewable natural gas opportunities, we can make North Carolina a national leader in agriculture and clean energy. The economic support that renewable natural gas will provide to North Carolina's farm families is significant. With the installation of renewable natural gas production facilities, farmers can turn the cost of manure management into a steady source of revenue. As a farmer, I'm familiar with those costs, which can be high, especially during a wet year like 2020. I want to emphasize how life-changing that will be for the agriculture industry and for North Carolina farmers. The ability to upgrade equipment, embrace new technologies, and expand the workforce will bring sustainable growth to our local communities and the hog farming industry. Renewable natural gas will also allow family farmers to provide clean, reliable energy to our neighbors. My family is a North Carolina farm family, and sustainability and success of our farm and the pork industry is important to us. With Align RNG, our farm can be one of many to ensure that the future of family farms is bright for the next generation. I urge the North Carolina DEQ to approve the air permit for Align RNG and show that North Carolina is committed to embracing the future of clean energy and supporting farm families. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Our next speaker will be Joel Porter, to be followed by Karen, excuse me, Karen Malam.
Hi. Good evening, my name is Joel Porter. I'm the Policy Manager at Cleaner Carolina. Thank you for recognizing the importance of this permit and holding this hearing. I believe that it is important for the department to set a precedent for projects like these and ensure that the air and health in communities where these projects will be cited are adequately protected. To do that, these types of projects must require environmentally superior technologies that include a denitrification/nitrification component to reduce nitrate solutions. Additionally, we have serious concerns that this project will create and emit dangerous levels of methane and toxic air pollutants. Leaks of methane in the pipe system and throughout the biogas production and utilization chain can cause environmental concerns such as soil oxidation. It is a potentially, is a particularly potent greenhouse gas that exacerbates climate change and presents safety concerns to human health. To mitigate these issues, DAQ and the project owners should create a plan to regularly monitor, detect, and replace equipment that leaks methane with new best-in-class equipment. This project will have over 30 miles of piping and connect 19 industrial hog operations. As such, we believe that DAQ drastically underestimates emission levels across the board, and this project should be classified as a Title V facility. Doing so will ensure that as regulations covering methane emissions continue to evolve, DAQ will have sufficient authority to enforce and minimize the fugitive emissions from the plant. We are pleased to see that the department's decision to recalculate the flare in combustion efficiency of hydrogen sulfide to sulfur dioxide. H2S concentrations can vary considerably depending on seasonal and environmental factors. DAQ must take this variability into consideration when calculating the facility's potential to emit SO2. We would like to see the department strengthen the permit further to set firm parameters on toxic air pollutants. Additionally, we would like to see clear and more frequent and constant monitoring of flow in H2S emissions. Neighbors of the Grady Road Project have been burdened with air and water pollution, noxious odors, and adverse health impacts caused by industrial hog operations. These impacts are disproportionately borne by people of color. By monetizing a byproduct from those operations without adding technology to minimize the underlying issues that cause the problems the first place.
Mr. Porter, Mr. Porter, you're two minutes to up.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening.
I'll submit written comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Our next speaker is Karen Malam, to be followed by Representative Raymond Smith.
Karen, if you would, if you're on the telephone, if you would, press star three to indicate to me so I can, if you're on the line, thank you. Ray, if we would move on, we would come back to Karen later.
Okay, very well. The next speaker will be Representative Raymond Smith, to be followed by Lori Barnhart.
Mr. Smith, you can go ahead and make your comments now.
Thank you. I'm Representative Raymond E. Smith, Jr., and I represent North Carolina House District 21 in the North Carolina General Assembly, which encompasses Sampson and Wayne Counties. As an elected official and as a consumer, I understand and advocate for the needs of my constituents. I'm confident that the work of Align RNG will help to address those needs. Sampson and Wayne Counties thrive from their prosperous farming industry and are proud of their deep agricultural roots. Many farmers in the area view RNG as an incredible opportunity for growth, security, and sustainability, all issues that I care about deeply. I'm a proud graduate of one of our state's two land-grant universities, North Carolina ENT State University, which has agriculture and technology as its core missions. Through innovative technology, the RNG process will capture methane from farms and convert the methane into renewable source of energy that can be used to heat homes and businesses in my district. This new business model will help grow the local economy and businesses' prospects to provide financial security for farm families. Since taking office, I've supported legislation aimed at removing pollutants from the environment, and RNG is another solution aimed at doing just that. In a recent letter that I received from NC DEQ acknowledging my efforts to support environmental issues, the following quotes were made. "Environmental protection and economic prosperity are not mutually exclusive, but can go hand in hand. This means that we can and should pursue win-win solutions whenever possible, and this is how I view this effort, as a win-win opportunity." Another quote, "Together, we can continue to provide environmental protection, create jobs, and strengthen the economy to drive North Carolina's global competitiveness." This means that ultimately, we all have a fiduciary responsibility to not only protect the environment, but to grow North Carolina's economic footprint. The chance to improve the key industry and the environment easily positions Align RNG as work I can stand behind. RNG opens doors to new opportunities that benefit families and neighbors in my district. I respectfully ask NC DEQ to approve the air permit for Align RNG.
Thank you, Representative Smith. Our next speaker is Lori Barnhart, to be followed by Marlo Ivy Vaughn.
Lori, you've been unmuted, go ahead and make your comments now.
Thank you, Ray. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lori Barnhart, and thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the North Carolina State Grange President, Jimmy Gentry. As you may or may not be aware, the Grange has been an integral part of our national and local agriculture community since the 19th century, including right here in North Carolina since 1875. In addition to our thousands of traditional farmers, many of our members live in urban areas and enjoy community gardening. Some farm on rooftops in cities and others in greenhouses in the suburbs, while others do not farm at all but want to be part of achieving a more sustainable way of living. I grew up on a dairy farm in Eastern North Carolina that was started by my father in 1953, and Lewis Farms continues operations today by my brother. Naturally, the health and economy of agriculture in rural North Carolina is very important to me, as it is to all of our Grange members. When I was made aware of what Align RNG was planning to do in North Carolina, I was excited about the opportunity for many of our farming communities. With technology innovations that lead to increased productivity, economic growth, and more sustainable environmental practices, it's rare that the farming community gets to be front and center of such an opportunity like this. That is what makes this project so special. Renewable natural gas is a product that improves our environment and creates positive outcomes for everyone. Our farmers and their families have an opportunity to earn additional income, while entire communities will gain access to reliable renewable energy that is carbon beneficial. For all the talk about carbon neutrality goals, these days RNG projects like this actually benefit the environment. This work captures 25 times more greenhouse gas emissions than are released from the end use of powering our homes and businesses. The benefits of this project are clear. To meet our energy demand with a clean, reliable, and renewable source that also creates additional income for our farmers and helps position Eastern North Carolina for long-term economic development growth is too big and too important to pass up. I urge the North Carolina DEQ to proceed with issuing Align RNG, the necessary air permit to make this project a reality for our farmers and our Eastern North Carolina communities. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the North Carolina State Grange.
Thank you, Ms. Barnhart. Our next speaker is Marlo Ivy Vaughn, to be followed by Bland Warren.
Ms. Marlo, if you are on the phone, please indicate, please press star three to indicate that, so I can select you, so I can unmute your line, thank you. Ray, we may have to come back to her.
Okay, that'll be fine. Let's move on to Bland Warren, to be followed by Santiago Vasquez.
Bland, I believe your phone line has been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statements now.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. My name is Bland Warren. I am the owner and CEO of Plastic Fusion Fabricators, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight in support of the Align Renewable Gas Project. Plastic Fusion Fabricators is a construction company. We have been focused primarily on constructing environmental containment systems since 1981, and a core part of our business are covered in-ground lagoon systems for municipal industrial and agricultural wastewater. And a core part of our business are covered in-ground lagoon systems for municipal industrial and agricultural wastewater. We have a history in the covered lagoon, on-farm anaerobic digestion systems, like that are proposed in this Align project. We constructed the first one in North Carolina at the Lloyd Ray Farm about 13 years ago. In addition, we built the first injectable RNG project. We constructed the anaerobic digesters for that project located near Keninsville. And in the past 15 years, we've probably become a leader in this, these type of systems. We've built over 10 million square feet of them. Most recently, a large system very similar to the Align in the Midwest. These systems have a strong operating history. They very efficiently capture all the greenhouse gases, methane and other noxious gases. They, they contain the wastewater, protect the groundwater in a way far superior to what's gone on in the past. They've made it through several significant weather events in North Carolina, and they have proven themselves without failure. As looking at a project like this Align project, one of the main areas of benefit to, to the local community will be on job creation.
Mr. Warren, Mr. Warren, I'm sorry, your two, your two minutes are up. We thank you for speaking at the hearing today. Our next speaker will be Santiago Vasquez to be followed by Kyle Cornish.
Yeah, good evening. Thanks for this opportunity. My name is Santiago Vasquez, and when I first came to the United States 26 years ago, I knew it to be a land of opportunity and a place to fulfill dreams. Through hard work and determination, I am now the proud owner of a hog farm here in eastern North Carolina. I also help manage other farms. The issue we are here about is also about a great opportunity. We are ready here in North Carolina to be a leader, not just in agriculture, but in renewable energy and innovation. This planned system of constructing anaerobic digesters and all covered lagoons on farms will provide for enhanced manure treatment and storage options for farmers. This project will undisputedly enhance the quality of our air. Eastern North Carolina is home to many local farms that will greatly benefit from the ingenuity of this entire concept. As a local Hispanic farm owner, I'm very excited about the opportunities for a more sustainable environment that renewable natural gas from our farms will create for the region. The environmental advantages, in addition to many economic benefits generated by Align RNG, marks a clear path forward for sustainability. I can wait to see this dream fulfilled and look forward to your support for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. Our next speaker is Kyle Cornish to be followed by Rachel Velez.
The proposed Align RNG BF Grady Road project is likely to also cause significant harm to communities in Duplin and Sampson Counties and will pollute nearby air and water resources. The facility is going to add to the air pollution burden of nearby communities, while Dominion and Smithfield continue to make money off banned outdated system of waste management. This project would submit near communities to more than 100,000 pounds of toxic air chemical pollutants. In addition to the odor of hydrogen sulfide being a significant nuisance, the gas is a threat to human health and can affect the human body's respiratory system. The project plans to use flaring to pollution control, but burning off tail gas constituents also has a negative impact on community health. Flaring is expected to occur at all times the system is operating. Researchers from USC and UCLA have found that exposure to flaring at gas production sites is associated with 50% higher odds of preterm birth compared with no exposure. These findings suggest that directed biogas development could negatively impact pregnancy and birth outcomes in the, in the surrounding areas. The draft air quality permit for the BF Grady Road project does not even consider the full air quality impacts of the project. It excludes the pollution associated with the 19 industrial hog operations in Duplin and Sampson Counties. Furthermore, this permit does not consider the potential impact of more than 30 miles of pipelines across unknown areas of Duplin and Sampson Counties that are required to transport biogas from hog operations to the upgrading facility. It's not sufficient to consider the facility separately from the industrial hog operations, the low-pressure gathering lines, and the pipelines which are essential to the function of this proposed facility. The Division must ensure that any permitting decisions accurately consider the full extent of emissions associated with all aspects of the project. Finally, this project is coming at a time when we're faced with an unprecedented global pandemic, which has resulted in 5,000 cases of COVID and 80 deaths, more than 80 deaths in Sampson and Duplin alone. I urge you to deny the permit at this time and wait for a later time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cornish. Our next speaker will be, will be Rachel Velez to be followed by Omega and Brenda Wilson.
Rachel, go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. My name is Rachel Velez, and I work with Clean Water for North Carolina. DAQ must pay increased attention to particulate matter emissions while we are in the height of the pandemic. With controls and limits, the Align RNG facility could emit annually up to .08 tons of particulate matter, .08 tons of particulate matter 10, and .06 tons of particulate matter 2.5. Studies show that both short and long-term particulate matter 2.5 exposure contributes to a higher incidence of lethality of COVID-19. The biogas facility would be sited in an area that already has a higher particulate matter 2.5 incidence than both the region and the state. Increased air pollution, including carcinogenic particulate matter emissions in Duplin and Sampson Counties poses serious risks to the respiratory health of the communities and may increase morbidity and mortality rates associated with COVID. Communities of color in Duplin and Sampson Counties near the proposed plant would be disproportionately harmed by this increased toxic air pollution. The area directly surrounding the site displays higher percentages of Black and Hispanic residents and higher poverty level, levels compared to the state and county as a whole. The census tracts contained within the project area, Census tract 903 in Duplin and Census tract 9701 in Sampson, also have a high population of Spanish speakers with limited English proficiency. This virtual platform for the Align RNG hearing does not offer sufficient opportunity for these impacted community members to ask questions and voice concerns. According to U.S. Census Bureau data, 32% of households located in Census tract 903 and 27% of households in Census tract 9701 do not have internet access. DAQ must postpone any permitting decisions until it's safe to have an in-person public hearing where impacted community members are given an accessible opportunity to ask questions, give comments, and feel represented in this permitting decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Velez. Our next speakers will be, speaker will be Omega and Brenda Wilson to be followed by Teri Nichols.
Ms. Wilson, if you would, press star three to indicate so I can select, so I can unmute your line if you're on the phone. Thank you. Okay, Ray, we would move on to Teri.
All right, the next speaker then will be Teri Nichols to be followed by Dorian Anna Line.
Teri, if you are on the phone, please press star three to indicate so I may unmute your line. Teri? Okay, moving to the next person.
Okay, the next speaker will be Dorian Anna Line to be followed by Janet Bifer.
Dorian, if you're on the phone, please press star three to indicate, so I may indicate you, so I may unmute your line. Dorian? Okay. We can move on to the next person.
Okay. Our next speaker will be Janet Bifer to be followed by Michelle Jacobs.
Janet, if you are on the phone, please press star three to indicate so that I may unmute your line. Thank you. Janet? We'll move on to the next person.
Okay. Our next speaker will be Michelle Jacobs to be followed by Agriculture Commissioner Steve Troxler.
Michelle, if you're on the phone, please go ahead and unmute your line. Press star three so I can unmute your line. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next person.
Okay. The next speaker will be Agriculture Commissioner Steve Troxler to be followed by Brenda Hatch.
Commissioner Troxler, if you're on the phone, please go ahead and press star three to indicate to me so I can go ahead and unmute your line.
Right. Rahat, you may also want to look for Jonathan Lanier, who registered Commissioner Troxler.
Okay, one second. Okay. Jonathan, you, your line has been unmuted. You can go ahead and have Mr. Commissioner Troxler make his comments now. Jonathan, your line's been unmuted. You can make your comments now.
Jonathan, need to check to see if his microphone's muted.
Yeah, he, he just unmuted, muted himself. You're unmuted now. You can speak, Jonathan. Okay, we'll have to come back.
Okay, we'll come back. The next speaker will be Brenda Hatch to be followed by Elsa Enstrom.
All right, Brenda, if you're on the telephone, please press star three to indicate so I may unmute your line. Okay. Sorry about that. There was a hot mic somewhere. So we, we may have to move on to the next person. Doesn't seem Brenda's on the line with us. We'll have to come back to her.
The, the next speaker will be Elsa Enstrom to be followed by Sherri White Williamson.
Elsa, if you're on the phone, please go ahead and press star three so that you can, so I can unmute your line, please. Elsa?
Okay, we'll move on.
Yep.
The next speaker will be Sherri White Williamson to be followed by Kim Porter.
Sherri, your line has been unmuted. You can go ahead and speak.
Thank you. I'm Sherri White Williamson, Environmental Justice Policy Director for the North Carolina Conservation Network and a Sampson County resident. I'm here tonight to implore the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to deny the permit application for the proposed Align RNG facility. Granting this application will once again subject communities who are already adversely impacted with high levels of toxins and pollution to be further impacted by the addition of another source of air pollution and potentially more water pollution. I will focus on the possible flaring that can have detrimental effects on the community. Pollutants from flaring such as sulfur dioxide, nitrous oxides, carbon dioxide, and PM 2.5 all cause respiratory conditions and can exacerbate pre-existing conditions such as asthma. CO2 and methane are greenhouse gases that also contribute to the adverse impact on Black, Brown, and Latinx communities most closely located to the proposed site. Even in the presence of emissions from these pollutants, DEQ has not included consideration of cumulative impacts resulting from existing sources in the community, including a surrounding industrial hog operations, a community trash disposal site, a train track and train traffic, a feed mill, and Interstate 40. It is not good enough simply considering emissions from one facility when the community is exposed to emissions from all of these sources. The lack of transparency surrounding this permit prevents fair treatment and meaningful involvement of the community. Not until tonight has there been any clear information on what farm will be connected by more than 30 miles of pipelines or what the path of the pipelines will be. What is clear, however, is that the community does not know how placement of this facility in their community will impact them. State laws and regulations must be strengthened to prevent, to protect communities of color and low-income communities, just as it protects other communities across the state. Along with my prepared statement, which I'll submit by Friday, the North Carolina Conservation Network will be submitting a petition already signed by more than 1,300 concerned citizens who oppose the approval of this permit. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. White Williamson. I will, the next speaker will be Kim Porter to be followed by Keith Larick.
Kim, if you're on the line, if you're on the, if you're calling by telephone, please indicate by pressing star three. Okay? Kim, is that you? Hello?
This, this is John Lanier with, with the North Carolina Department of Agriculture. I was calling on behalf of Commissioner Troxler.
Um, Ray?
Ray, I think you're muted.
Mr. Lanier, we've already called Commissioner Troxler. We'll be happy to call you after we've run through the rest of the names. Is Ms. Kim Porter on the line?
Ms. Kim Porter, again, if you would, press star three to indicate me so I can unmute your line. Okay.
Okay, we're going to move on. The next speaker is Mr. Keith Larick to be followed by Jovita Lee.
Hey, Keith, go ahead. You've been unmuted.
Okay, thank you. My name is Keith Larick with North Carolina Farm Bureau. As a result of this project, air quality in the area of 19 swine farms will be improved. Odors will be reduced. Emissions of methane, a potent greenhouse gas, will be reduced, resulting in clean renewable energy that will power up to 3,500 homes. This type of project has already been proven to work in eastern North Carolina as the Optima KV site near Keninsville has been operating for two years. This project represents a step forward for the industry that DEQ should encourage and support as this project fits well with two initiatives related to Governor Roy Cooper's Executive Order 80. DEQ's Risk and Resilience Plan and Clean Energy Plan both recommend DEQ's Risk and Resilience Plan and Clean Energy Plan both recommend the use of digesters to help DEQ meet its goal of carbon neutrality in the power sector by 2050. Even Duke University's Nicholas Institute has touted the benefits of biogas projects like this one in eastern North Carolina. As we heard tonight from DWR, this project will cause no increase in wastewater nitrogen concentration and no increased risk to water quality. And digesters also reduce bacteria concentrations in animal waste. The result of this project will be improved air and water quality in Sampson and Duplin Counties, which is something we should all be happy about. In spite of the clear benefits of this project, the permitting process for this facility and the digesters has dragged on for nearly one year. During that time, about 900 tons of methane have been emitted from the 19 swine farms into the atmosphere. Many of the same rural residents that have filed nuisance lawsuits against swine operations are now being misled about this beneficial project by groups who only seek to end animal agriculture in North Carolina. This is unfortunate because digester projects like this one would undoubtedly improve air quality near their homes. We urge DEQ to follow the law and issue both the air and water permits for these projects as soon as possible. Thank you.
Mr. Larick, thank you for speaking. Our next speaker will be Jovita Lee to be followed by Albert Corbett.
Ms. Jovita Lee, okay, I believe your phone has been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your comments now.
Thank you. I am Jovita Lee with Center for Biological Diversity and the Align's first major directed biogas project in North Carolina will be a project reliant on a system that is severely outdated and has been recognized since the 1990s for its insecurity and banned from further development. This project will also require a 30-plus mile natural gas pipeline and an upgrading facility, which is a deliberate disregard of the health and safety of BIPOC individuals who are already approximately two to three times more likely than white people to live near industrial operations and other environmental harms. This project only exacerbates the disproportionate impact BIPOC communities who bear the burden of pollution and adverse health effects caused by the hog waste crisis. It also presents a danger to our wildlife and ecosystems required for satisfactory quality of life. Our natural resources, such as our rivers and streams, as well as our air quality, will all deteriorate as a result of this project. Climate justice cannot come at the expense of communities, and it cannot come at the expense of the rest of the environment. North Carolina needs clean, sustainable climate solutions. Despite this corporation's greenwashing publicity campaigns, this is an inherently dirty industry that must fundamentally change its practices before a project like this could even be considered a step in the right direction. But due to the lack of transparency and inclusion of crucial information in this permit and the absence of proper communication with the community prior to this public comment period beginning, it's safe to conclude that this process has been illegitimate. We reject the permit as written and demand that the community become first priority rather than Smithfield Foods and Dominion Energy profiting off the Black and Brown communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Our next speaker will be Albert Corbett to be followed by Danielle Coons. I'm sorry, Danielle Coons has already spoken. Let me, let me repeat. The next speaker will be Albert Corbett to be followed by Joshua Combs.
Mr. Albert, I'm sorry, I apologize. Albert, please press star three to indicate so I may unmute your line. Mr. Albert? We'll have to come back.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Our next speaker will be Joshua Combs to be followed by North Carolina Senator Norman Sanderson. Mr. Combs?
Mr. Combs, if you're on the phone, okay, so I believe this is him. Mr. Combs, you, go ahead. Is this Mr. Combs?
Yes, do you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Hello, my name is Joshua Combs. I'm a fourth-generation hog farmer. I'm a contract grower for Prestige Farms, a family-owned company that provides all-natural pork to families all over the country. My farm is close to the BF Graddy Road project. So I have learned about renewable natural gas and all of the benefits this technology will bring to farmers and to the environment. For farmers like me, renewable natural gas represents an incredible opportunity to sustainable cash flow. With a small investment in this system, farmers will be able to turn the cost of manure management into new revenue stream. Having a source of constant year-round income for the sale of gas will allow farmers to reinvest in operations, in our families, and into our local communities. Renewable natural gas will also allow farmers to significantly reduce their emissions. This technology captures the methane that results from manure decomposition and puts it to good use, heating my neighbors' homes. This process removes more emissions from the atmosphere that are created when gas is when gas is used. This is important to me. As a farmer, I have great respect for environment and I'm committed to preserving land that I work on. It is through this land that I am able to provide for my family and feed families across the country. So I am always on the lookout for ways I can better steward to the environment that gives me so much. Renewable natural gas is one of the, those that are, one of those rare technologies that improves our world. There is a positive outcome for every fellow farmer. We'll have a chance to benefit from this constant year-round income. Our neighbors have increased
Mr. Combs, excuse me, Mr. Combs, your, your two minutes have ended. We thank you for speaking today. Our next speaker is Senator Norman Sanderson to be followed by Senator Brent Jackson. Is Mr. Sanderson available on the phone?
Mr. Sanderson, if you would, press star three to unmute yourself or if you're on the line, you can also
Okay. I think we're gonna move. I'm sorry.
How about now that I finally figured out how to get off of mute?
Is that you, Senator Sanderson?
Yes, it is.
Go right ahead.
Okay, I want to thank, first of all, all the participants in this. I have heard a lot of good questions here tonight. And I know that there are a lot of concerns, but I really think that our Department of Natural and Economic Resources, Division of Environmental Quality, which is one of the most strict in the nation, and I think they do a great job in looking after the natural resources here in North Carolina. For the last four years, I've been able to chair the Senate Committee on Agriculture and Natural Resources. And for the last eight years, I have sat on, sitting on, sat on the Commerce Committee. And so, you know, this is a great, I've heard many people tonight talk about win-win situations, and I think that's what this is. I want the folks who have been calling in about their concerns to be assured that this is going to be a project that is totally watched over very, very carefully. This is a prototype, I think, of what can happen in other states. On the practical side, you know, we hear a lot about affordable housing, and we hear a lot about affordable healthcare. I think the time is now that we start talking about affordable food also. Because, you know, that is, that is one of the basic necessities of life. And we can't allow the food in this state and in this nation to stop being processed. We feed not only the United States of America, but we feed the world. And we have to be able to do that. I think this is a great start. And I'm hoping that if this is success, that we can find the same kind of process maybe even in our poultry industry, which are two of the, probably the most regulated industries that we have in agriculture. By sitting on as chairman, co-chairman of the Agriculture Committee, I've heard a lot about environment. I've seen a lot of legislation come through, comes through the General Assembly. And I think North Carolina is, is one of the states in the United States that is very, very concerned about our environment and does a whole lot to help.
Senator Sanderson, Senator Sanderson, your two minutes have ended. We appreciate you speaking today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone to please press star three to ensure that their mics are unmuted when you're called upon to speak. That'll make this process easier. Our next speaker will be Senator Brent Jackson to be followed by Representative Jimmy Dixon.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brent Jackson. I'm the North Carolina State Senator for District 10, which includes Duplin, Sampson, and Johnston Counties. As an elected official for the last 10 years and a resident of this area for my entire life, I understand the needs of rural eastern North Carolina. The Align RNG project is one endeavor that will help us meet some of our most pressing needs, offering our dedicated farmers additional income opportunities while producing clean renewable power for our homes and businesses. This project from Align RNG is the product of years of research. It harnesses methane and turns it into renewable natural gas to power homes and businesses. Renewable natural gas projects like this both lower greenhouse gas emissions and provide a reliable, clean power source for our community. In fact, the Optimum KBRNG facility near Kenansville is operating this way today as we speak. In my district and in eastern North Carolina overall, we understand that progress is a result of adopting to our, our environment. These kinds of projects help us continue forward that progress while also creating a new diversified revenue stream for our dedicated North Carolina farmers and their families. Additionally, it will also benefit the broader community through increased economic activity and tax revenues. This is an issue we should all be excited about. I respectfully ask once again that NCDQ to approve this air permit for Align RNG. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Senator Jackson. Our next speaker will be Representative Jimmy Dixon to be followed by Suzanne Buchamel.
Just a quick reminder to everybody who is going to comment, please remember to check your computer and make sure that your mic is plugged in and that you have unmuted yourself on your computer prior to participating with comments. Thank you.
Representative Dixon, are you available to speak?
If you're, Representative Dixon, are you on the line? I believe this
Yes, yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much. I will state six irrefutable facts for the regulators to consider, and I will draw a conclusion. Number one, this public hearing is not required, but in an abundance of caution, you have convened this hearing, which is good. Number two, there is no expansion of hogs in this process. Number three, for years in court, we have heard cover your lagoons. Number four, this process will cover some lagoons. Number five, this process will reduce emissions. Number six, without this process, current emissions continue to go in the atmosphere. Conclusion, these six facts alone supports issuing these permits. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Dixon. Our next speaker will be Suzanne Buchamel to be followed by Jamie Currie.
Suzanne, if you're on the, if you called in by telephone, please press star three to indicate to me your line so I may unmute it. Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we'll have to come back to Suzanne.
Okay. Our next speaker will be Jamie Currie to be followed by Connie Raper.
Jamie, your line's been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your comments now. Jamie?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Jamie Currie. I have advanced degrees in environmental science. I'm a resident of Sampson County, and I'm married to a healthcare professional who works in Sampson County. I'm a mother, and I'm in opposition to this project. This project's a health threat to my child, my family, and my community. I hear people talking about revenue streams, and I truly care and support about small, small farms. But they're leaving out the immense cost and burden on public health with the increase of release of sulfur dioxide, which can harm respiratory systems, cause asthma, and increase death rate. Align Renewables NG has withheld critical details of this project, including placement and impacts of associated pipelines. 15 of the 19 facilities are unnamed. The details are insufficient to accurately assess the potential pollution. This project relies on complex and rigorous monitoring and compliance and daily calculations by a company who has repeatedly been in non-compliance from issues ranging from air and water pollution to failing to protect their workers during a COVID-19 pandemic. They're currently facing lawsuits in federal court for neighbors of their facilities. They've promised to use cleaner technology, but this project relies on and entrenches an outdated system of storing waste and spraying it, a process which has repeatedly proved a health and environmental threat and does nothing to make these lagoons less vulnerable to threat, to flooding, and other things that have threatened the community. I urge you to deny this permit. It would burden the community with long-term health impacts, and they have provided an insufficient amount of information to be able to accurately assess the risks to our community. And I would also like to echo the concerns that were raised earlier about the people directly living around this project who don't have access to internet, and they need to be able to have access to a hearing that's accessible to them. I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Currie. Our next speaker will be Connie Raper to be followed by Blakely Hildebrand.
Connie, if you've called in by telephone, would you, you can press star three so I can go ahead and unmute your line. Connie? Okay?
Okay, let's, let's, let's move on to the next, the next person. The next speaker will be Blakely Hildebrand to be followed by Maya Hutt.
All right. Blakely, you've been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statements now.
Thank you. My name is Blakely Hildebrand, and I'm an attorney at the Southern Environmental Law Center. Thank you for the opportunity to offer these comments. The Grady Road project is the first of its kind in North Carolina, and align is made very clear that it plans to replicate this model. The DAQ's decision on this project will set a precedent for future projects. And if this project is approved, as it's currently proposed, it will make pollution problems that have existed for decades even worse for the, for the residents who live nearby. DAQ is missing critical information from Align regarding the scope of this project and the impacts of this project. of this project and the impacts of this project. In addition to demanding more transparency from Align, DAQ must do its due diligence to verify the information submitted to the agency. The draft permit, as it's written, fails to meet the requirements of the Federal Clean Air Act and the state air quality regulations and should not be issued. The Grady Road Project will add 20 entirely new sources of air pollution in Duplin and Sampson Counties, including flares at each of the 19 hog operations and the upgrading facility itself. And to meet the requirements of the Clean Air Act and protect the health of the residents nearby, DAQ must account for all of these new pollution sources when permitting the project. DAQ has not included emissions from the 19 connected hog operations, and these emissions would not exist but for the, but for the upgrading facility. The draft permit addresses only one of the 20 emission sources created by Align. In addition, the updated draft underestimates the upgrading facility's potential emit, potential to emit SO2 and H2S emissions. DAQ inappropriately relies on Align's representations regarding the flow of biogas, the concentration of these emissions in that biogas. And this, combined with the lack of enforceable conditions regarding flow and H2S emissions, and the confusing monitoring and record-keeping requirements render this permit unlawful as drafted, and we encourage DAQ not to issue it as drafted. Thank you for accepting these comments. I will submit written comments by Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hildebrand. Our next speaker will be Maya Hutt, to be followed by Joe Melvin.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Maya Hutt. I'm an attorney at the Southern Environmental Law Center. DEQ should reject this permit as written, not only because of the Grady Road Facility's negative air quality impact, but also because greenlighting this project would exacerbate water pollution caused by the lagoon and sprayfield waste management system. The biogas that this facility processes would come from 19 hog operations. Each of these hog operations stores hog urine and feces in large lagoons and then sprays that liquid waste onto cropland. The lagoon and sprayfield system has seriously compromised water quality throughout the Lower Cape Fear River Basin, causing ground and surface water contamination, eutrophication, algae blooms, fish kills, and other ecological issues. This facility will only make those problems worse. Biogas production increases the nitrogen concentration of the liquid waste in these lagoons. We have not seen any research indicating that the nitrogen would decrease if it's subsequently stored in open lagoons. And as a result, when that waste is taken out of their lagoons and when it's sprayed onto fields, the risk of water contamination increases. To comply with state law, it's required that waste application does not exceed economic rate, or the rate at which crops can absorb nutrients. Biogas-producing operations must make substantial changes to their animal waste management programs in order to comply with this rule. In other words, issuing this permit increases the risk that hog operations overapply animal waste in violation of state law. Twenty years ago, Smithfield, a 50% owner of this project, made the promise to the people of North Carolina to transition away from the lagoon-sprayfield system. They have not kept that promise. They've delayed. And now, they've suddenly come up with a bunch of money to invest in revamping hog operations to produce biogas and increase their own profits, again, at the expense of the local communities and their environment. We urge you to reject this permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutt. Our next speaker will be Joe Melvin, to be followed by Cliff Kilpatrick.
Oh, go ahead. Your line's been unmuted.
Thank you. This is Joe Melvin, Director of Business Development for North Carolina Southeast, a regional economic development partnership covering 18 counties, of which Sampson and Duplin are two of those member counties. Our organization stands in full support of Smithfield Dominion Energy and the Align Renewable RNG Project. Understanding that the hog industry is a major economic engine for not only those two counties, but the region, we support what is a proven technology already in operation of these very strong companies that have partnered together to bring some economic impact. We support the opportunity of the clean energy that it provides, the reduced emissions that it also offers across those two counties, and a new energy source. As we try to transform the future of sustainable energy and agriculture in southeastern North Carolina, not only does it provide those environmental benefits, but it also provides regional economic benefits. With the injection of $375 million across the region over the decade, it's going to provide some construction opportunities, new jobs, support and expand the local tax base. And so through that, it's also going to provide those local farms a new revenue stream. So in this holistic model in which they are partnering with limited environmental impacts, significant economic benefits, our organization hopes that DEQ will strongly consider granting the air permit to Smithfield Dominion as part of their Align Renewable RNG partnership to grow the future of North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Melvin. Our next speaker will be Cliff Kilpatrick, to be followed by Stephen Norris.
Cliff, if you've called in by phone, please press star three to indicate to me so I may unmute your line. Cliff, I believe this is you. Go ahead.
Yes, my, my name is Cliff Kilpatrick. My family's in the hog business in Duplin County, and I also work with Cape Fear Farm Credit, where I serve farmers and work with them as they make financial decisions every day. North Carolina prides itself on the strength and prosperity of its farming industry. For many in eastern North Carolina, farming is the livelihood for many families and neighbors. Today, the Align Renewables Natural Gas Project positions eastern North Carolina as a leader in agriculture and renewable technology. As a farmer with a career in financial services, I'm interested in economic growth of my community. The Align RNG Project will drive greater economic development and sustainability across the region. The project will encourage diversified growth in our local economies by attracting millions of dollars in RNG investments, thereby increasing our local tax revenue and property values. The project will generate additional revenue for local farmers to reinvest in their operations and help grow our local workforce through new short and long-term jobs in the biogas sector. Without question, adopting RNG will enrich local farm communities with new economic opportunities that will continue growing for years to come. Align RNG clearly satisfies the wants of our, of our community and I clearly support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilpatrick. Our next speaker will be Stephen Norris, to be followed by North Carolina Senator Paul Lo.
Stephen, you've been unmuted. If you would, please make your comments now.
Mr. Norris, are you unmuted? Is your microphone plugged in?
Let's go ahead and move forward. The next, we'll, we'll try to come back to Mr. Norris.
Our next speaker will be Senator Paul Lo, to be followed by Representative Shelley Willingham.
Thank you for this opportunity. After hearing about these renewables, I became excited about the possibilities because it looked like a safe way to do some things that need to be done in eastern North Carolina that will be good for our entire community. I'm thinking about farmers, I'm thinking about minority farmers that will benefit from this technology, and we'll get some things done in our state that will be good for our entire state. So I'm certainly excited to hear about it, excited to hear that we can take advantage of some of this technology that will help our environment. So I'm looking to hear more and to support this any way I can. Thank you for this opportunity.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Lo. I'm going to move on to Representative Shelley Willingham. The speaker after Representative Willingham will be Gus Simmons.
Yes, good evening. This is Shelley Willingham, and I'm the North Carolina State Representative for District 23, which is here in eastern North Carolina. And as an elected official and resident of our region, I know full well that ours is one with capable workforce and resources needed to meet the growing needs of enterprises, considering moving to our part of the state for relocation for growth. What our region continues to need, though, is to help facilitate that growth opportunity, is critical infrastructure, which includes clean, reliable, and affordable energy. The Align RNG development is one that can help us meet that specific need. As a region, we know that when projects like this one go up in our neighboring counties, we're all better positioned to compete nationally and globally. The fact that it is also provides farmers with additional income opportunities, produces clean and renewable energy sources, and reduces greenhouse gas emission, and our atmosphere is a win for us all. In eastern North Carolina, we embrace opportunities for progress in our economy and our environment. I would also be remiss if I didn't bring up the fact that the project is also in alignment with Governor Cooper's Clean Energy Plan. With that in mind, I respectfully request that the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality approve this air permit to Align RNG and for the future of our region and our state. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Willingham. Our next speaker will be Gus Simmons, to be followed by Naima Mohammed. Go ahead, Mr. Simmons.
Good evening. My name is Gus Simmons, and I lead the Bioenergy Services for Kavanaugh Associates. I'm a lifelong North Carolinian. My family and I reside in Pender County. I'm originally from Duplin County and still have many friends and extended family there. I'm the lead designer for the BF Grady Road Project, and also lead the design and permitting of similar facilities in North Carolina and across the country. Many biogas projects are currently being built and operated across the US. These projects have been supported by the US EPA due to their significant reduction in greenhouse gas emissions and other numerous environmental benefits. The BF Grady Road Project in particular provides numerous, numerous environmental benefits. The project will obtain biogas from local farms to process into renewable natural gas. Doing so creates a significant reduction in emissions from these participating farms and displaces an equal amount of fossil fuels used in our state and the emissions associated with the use of those fossil fuels in our state. The project does not create any new emissions, rather reduces and converts existing emissions to a better outcome. Participating farms will either construct a new covered digester or cover an existing lagoon. New digesters increase the treatment volume of the manure management system and creates a significant amount of additional effluent storage, which will aid farmers in dealing with unseasonable and extreme weather events. Covering an existing lagoons means that structure will no longer collect rainfall, which reduces the stormwater input into the manure management system. Lastly, it should be noted that all natural gas consumed in North Carolina, but for the two existing biogas to RNG projects, is purchased from other states. Many of our critical facilities rely on this out-of-state supplied fuel and are susceptible to supply disruptions. These projects strengthen our supply resiliency and reduces our dependence on other states for energy. In consideration of the energy benefits to our state, emissions reduction, and other environmental benefits, this project should be permitted to proceed as efficiently as possible. Thank you for the opportunity to contribute.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Our next speaker will be Naima, Nia, Naima Mohammed, to be followed by Steve Kavanaugh.
Naima, your phone line has been unmuted.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for this opportunity. I, well, you know, let me retract because I, I'm not sure that I'm thankful because I'm about tired of having to attend these kinds of hearings where people are trying to protect their lives. But anyway, with that being said, biogas is poisonous from start to finish. The methods used to make it, to move it and to process it make air unbreathable, water undrinkable, and homes unlivable. When hog lagoons are kept to produce biogas, they turn the liquid waste even more toxic. When that waste is sprayed onto fields or overflowed during major storms, it poisons the well water, the well water people drink, the soil on which children play, and the rivers and streams where people fish. Research has proven that those who live near hog operations die sooner and more often from diseases related to polluted air and water, anemia, kidney disease, and tuberculosis. The nausea and odors from hog operations keep people prisoners in their homes and even, and even there, they are not safe. Research has shown traces of pig feces on, on appliances inside people's homes. Duplin and neighboring counties are a flood plain, which makes biogas projects a triple threat. They're at greater risk from being flooded with hog waste during hurricanes by being built over wetland pipelines destroy what little flood descent we have left. The thing that is prone to deep from biogas projects is 86 times worse for our climate than carbon, leading to more frequent and more extreme storms in the first place. Biogas in Smithfield's latest scheme to get the, get rich quick, making money off of problems that they created and promised to fix while black, brown, and poor people pay the price. Smithfield has shown us before and during the pandemic, they don't care whether you are a resident, a hog farmer, or a plant worker. They will put your life and your livelihood on the line if it.
Ms. Mohammed, I'm sorry, Ms. Mohammed, your, your two minutes are up. Thank you for speaking today. Our next speaker is Steve Kavanaugh, to be followed by Belinda Joyner.
Good evening. I'm Steve Kavanaugh, a licensed professional engineer and president of Kavanaugh, a 25-year North Carolina consulting firm. Our firm lives our mission of cultivating stewardship of our earthly resources through innovation. Since 1995, we've been working with a diverse group of stakeholders who have expressed a keen interest in improving the air and water quality of our state. In 1998, our firm worked closely with NC State, placed a demonstration manure treatment system on a farm in Onslow County to study the environmental benefits of screening, as well as nitrogen and phosphorus uptake of swine effluent. This experience led to our selection as a project technical manager for the EST Demonstration Initiative. In this role, we assisted NC State, technology providers, the public, and the swine industry in evaluating enhancements to the permitted swine waste handling systems. We then worked with Duke University on Lloyd Ray Farms, and then we partnered with Optima Bio to implement the first clustered swine-derived biogas collection and injection project in our state. This project created the first natural gas to be placed into the pipeline grid ever from within North Carolina. This history is important because it's been so informative. The Align BF Grady Road Project is the result of nearly 25 years of research and evaluation by industry and its stakeholders. I personally have observed how these projects provide a lift to our communities and our state. BF Grady Road permits have been under review for nearly a year. How is this a structural delay cultivating environmental stewardship? Frankly, the roadblocks and vacillating permitting process is disheartening. We've answered multiple requests for information well beyond the typical rigor of permit review, many of which were unrelated questions by outside parties rather than the permit reviewers themselves. The stalling and roadblocks thrown at this permitting process are putting at risk an initiative that is great for our communities and our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. Our next speaker will be Belinda Joyner, to be followed by Kay Reeveold.
Good evening. Profit over people. I need to ask, answer the question that one of the ladies asked earlier. How did they get picked? You got picked, sweetheart, because your economic developer met with Smithfield and Duke Energy, and from there was supposed to go. And from there, it was supposed to go to your planning board, and from your planning board, it was supposed to go to your county commissioners, and they have the last so as to what come into your community. And I'm listening, this pandemic should be the last. In this pandemic, a public hearing should be the last thing that you all are having. So that shows you the inconsiderate for people that's already impacted, that's been impacted, and you say you're gonna make it better. But what about the damage that's already been done? When people's livelihoods and, you know, you don't live in this community, so it's okay for you to go in there and pollute it. You know, people died in it, it's fine, but one gentleman said substantial, substantial profits or income or whatever. So, you know, you need to consider others and let it not be about so much of money, but about the people that are breathing. And I'm hearing all these representatives. My thing that sounds like to me is taxation with no representation. People in Duplin, Sampson County, you all need to get up and get together, stand, because you all are the ones that's gonna suffer. Economic development is fine, but we don't need economic development that's gonna kill us. And who's gonna profit in the end? Smithfield Carrots and Duke Energy and those farmers who will profit. And they say a job, yes, it's a job, but then you still inhaling all this stuff right there where you're working. And then, you know, if you get sick, then are they gonna pay your hospital bills? So it's a whole lot to think about. Profit over people. Taxation with no representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joyner. Our next speaker is Kay Rebold, to be followed by Barbara Grady.
Kay, your line's been unmuted. You can go ahead and speak now.
Hi, my name's Kay Rebold. And I'm a resident of Raleigh. I'm a member of the Alliance to Protect the People and Places We Live, Apple. Appreciate the opportunity to make this statement to DEQ today. I'm deeply opposed to the Department of Air Quality issuing a permit to align RMG for its proposed biogas facility in Duplin County. This project harms local residents and pollutes the environment. We don't need an industry that promotes more industrialized hog farms, which would be needed to convert the hog waste into biogas. Duke University found that people who live near large swine operations have higher death and disease rates than people who live farther away. People of color bear a disproportionate burden from the foul odors and higher death and disease rates because of living near the large hog farms. Capping the biogas from swine waste requires a cap over a waste bit. Capping these lagoons, capping these lagoons actually results in a dramatic increase in harmful pollutants, including ammonia. This remains in the lagoon and then is sprayed in nearby fields where it runs off during rain, contaminating waterways. Residents in the community should not have to suffer from this toxic collaboration between Dominion Energy and Smithfield Foods. They're already paying the price with poor air quality and polluted groundwater from industrialized poultry and hog farms in their communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rebold. Our next speaker is Barbara Grady, to be followed by Reverend Matt Ledgerton.
My name is Barbara Grady. Thank you. My name is Barbara Grady. My granddaddy always said folks who had money called it Grady, but that's fine too. I don't have a particular stand on this issue. I don't live near one of the hog farms that's gonna be indicated, but I am concerned for the people who do live nearby who will not profit. I'm also concerned about the fact that it hasn't been too long ago since Duplin County had a problem with their water testing people. A person, as I understand it, was taking samples from one place and claiming it came from several other places. So I want to know who is going to be doing the testing and who's gonna be checking the one who's doing the testing. My groundwater right now is not drinkable. I have to go on to a community water system, and I know this is about air quality. And there are actually several days a month when I can hang my clothes on the line because they're not spraying, and the weather is okay for drying my clothes outdoors. I am concerned for our environment. I'm concerned for the people who are gonna be affected by, who will not be profiting. And I just have a lot of questions that are unanswered at this point, and I will be submitting those to your department. Thank you so much for the time.
Ms. Grady, thank you for your comments. We're gonna move on, and our next speaker is going to be Reverend Matt Ledgerton, to be followed by Mr. Jimmy Melvin.
Reverend, your line.
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm Reverend Matt Ledgerton. I'm co-director of the Robinson County Cooperative for Sustainable Development and interim director of the statewide North Carolina Climate Solutions Coalition. I'm also a member and co-founder of Apple. Eastern North Carolina's been my home for forty-five years, and I've worked in the field of environmental protection and environmental justice for thirty-six years. I oppose the proposed air quality permit because the biogas industry is not a clean, renewable, green, or sustainable industry based on longstanding definitions and principles. If an air quality or water quality permit application can meet the technical merits of our less than satisfactory state laws and rules, but does not propose the most environmentally and economically responsible production methods, it is the responsibility of DEQ to work with the administrative and legal branches of our state government to reject such industrial permits utilizing additional standards allowed by federal law under NEPA and Title VI of Civil Rights Act and the state's commitment to move away from all carbon-based energy infrastructure, including biogas. This is not only related to cumulative and disproportionate impact, but also when there are alternative methods available that are much more responsible, that did not place environmental and public health at risk. Basically, when there's a better way, DEQ save the day, fulfill your mission without washing your hands of this opportunity and responsibility. The solution to hog waste is to keep it in its natural state and manufacture it into fertilizer pellets in small and medium-sized scale factories. The solution is not to separate the wastewater, store it in lagoons, and spread it on fields in our communities, cap it, burn it, creating more methane and carbon dioxide, more land application, construction of miles of pipelines at lower property values, and blending it in with natural gas in order to try and salvage the natural gas industry. This is neither a clean or renewable solution. The call this project renewable natural gas is deceptive on two accounts. When any product is burned, it is no longer renewable. This is wrong as calling methane gas natural. Methane gas is only natural when it's left in the ground and not extracted with massive amounts of chemicals and infused with chemicals to make it smell.
Reverend Ledgerton, Reverend Ledgerton, your two minutes are up. Thank you for your comments today. We're going to move on to the next speaker, who is Jimmy Melvin, to be followed by Janet Melvin.
Jimmy, if you are on a telephone, would you please press star three to indicate so I may unmute your line? Okay. Jimmy, you've been unmuted. Go ahead. Go ahead, Jimmy.
Mr. Melvin, we're ready for you to speak. Okay. For the sake of time, we're going to move on to Janet Melvin. After Janet Melvin, our next speaker will be Richard Koontz.
Janet, please press star three to indicate that I may unmute your phone line, please.
Not hearing from Ms. Jan.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Janet.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, we hear you.
Yeah, hi, my name, thank you. My name is Janet Melvin, and my problem is transparency. There's not been a lot of public information available to the public to understand what is really going on. Where will the pipeline be laid? Who will ensure that the hog waste does not leak into the ground? And if it does leak into the ground, who will be responsible for that? Has every landowner that will have their land impacted by the facility and the pipes being contacted? What types of resources will be provided to the communities to make sure they are safe from pipe leaks and truck spill? Thank you for your time, and I hope that I want this, hoping that this permit will be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melvin. Our next speaker will be Richard Koontz, to be followed by Chastity Melvin.
Mr. Richard, if you would, press star three so I may, okay. Your phone line has been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statements now.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'll keep this brief. Since moving to Roseboro, I've had to adjust to a lot of things. One of the things I didn't plan on adjusting to was the smell of the hog farm. The smell is putrid and overwhelming. When you first come outside, you smell it really strong. If you've never smelled hog farms, just imagine thousands and thousands of pigs pooping all in feces laying around with urine. It's a bad smell. Can you imagine what that smell is like? Now, a line wants to take that same hog waste and put it in pipes and transport it throughout the county. This would be bad for anyone or anything that comes into contact with the air around those pipelines and hog farms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koontz. Our next speaker will be Chastity Melvin, to be followed by Jamel Melvin.
Hi, thanks for having me. First, I would like to say, as Janet Melvin spoke, we don't know where the hog farms will actually be located, but it's unfortunate that already most of the hog farms are located near black and brown communities in Sampson County. The history of this is terrible as far as it goes with environmental racism and how it impacts black and brown communities all over the United States, and it's well documented. Sadly, our own challenges with hog waste and hog odor, as Richard Koontz just spoke about, have been well documented. Now, a line wants to add more problems by contributing to the early quality of neighborhoods like mine. Sampson County has always supported me and my career. It has taken me all over the world. I want to make sure that my family and friends have clean air and can enjoy the Sampson County that I enjoyed growing up in. And I would like to further say, like, I know that this is supported by billionaire companies. So if the Republicans and everyone wants to get this in Sampson County, then Smithfield and all these big companies should give us free water, clean up our water systems, and pay medical bills because it is going to affect people in our community in a very negative way in the long run. And they have enough money to do it. They're billion-dollar companies. Or they should also let us get stock in the companies. If you're gonna, if you're gonna come into our town, where we're the twelve poorest county in a hundred counties in North Carolina, then give us stock options. Let us buy into this renewable energy, and then we can take care of our families and our health bills. And any of the concerns that people don't know will come from putting these, putting more waste in Sampson County, period. So there's a lot of things that we can do if you want to get it done, but you're gonna have to be able to compensate people for the harm you're gonna do to them. So I deny it. I don't think we need anymore. And I've learned a lot on this call. Thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Melvin. Our next speaker will be Jamel Melvin, followed by John Brooks.
Jamel, if you would, please press star three if you're calling in from a telephone to indicate so I may unmute your line. Thank you. All right. So we'll have to come back to Jamel.
Okay. We'll move on from Jamel Melvin. Our next speaker will be John Brooks, to be followed by Beth Henry.
John, if you would, please press star three to indicate to me so I may unmute your line. Okay.
All right, we'll move on from Mr. Brooks. The next speaker will be Beth Henry, to be followed by Lynn Coleman.
Beth?
I'm Beth Henry.
Go ahead, Beth.
I'm Beth Henry. I grew up in Clennan. My daddy was administrator for the Farmers Home Administration there, and I care about farmers. But I question this project. My disabled sister still lives there, and two of her caregivers live in Turkey. They know nothing about this project. They live within walking distance of hog lagoons and have no idea whether those lagoons are part of this project or where the pipelines will go. DEQ should not approve an air pollution permit when community members don't know about the full project. The project would not, could not exist without methane from the hog lagoons and without the pipeline, but the community members don't know what hog lagoons are involved or where the pipelines will go. To me, this utter lack of transparency is an environmental injustice, or you could call it racism. My friends who live in Turkey are black and poor, and the black, brown, and poor people of Sampson and Duplin counties deserve better. And our Department of Environmental Quality can do better. People of color deserve to be meaningfully involved in projects affecting them. But it can't be meaningful when there's so much that's secret, when they don't know what farms are involved, what, how the lagoons will be modified, the impacts of the modifications, where the pipelines will go. The neighbors need to be informed. Smithfield promised twenty years ago to clean up the lagoon, and they should not be allowed to profit further from the damaging lagoon and spray field system while refusing to keep their promises. More black and Latino people.
Ms. Henry, Ms. Henry, your two minutes are over. Thank you for your comments today. We're gonna move on to the next speaker. The next speaker is Lynn Coleman, to be followed by Marion Chavious.
Ms. Lynn Coleman, if you're on the phone, I think I believe this is you.
Yes, my name is Lynn Coleman. I've lived in North Carolina all my life. I spent a career as a nurse and as a nursing professor at UNC Charlotte, and I'm now retired. I know people who live in Clennan and Turkey, and I'm concerned about their health and well-being because of the air and water pollution from factory farms. Public health studies show that people who live near confined animal feeding operations have worse health outcomes. The people I know in Clennan and Turkey have many health problems. Many people living near factory farms, including the people I know, are black, Latino, or indigenous folks who suffer from health disparities. They're also getting COVID and dying of it at higher rates than white people. I oppose the Align RMG project because it will cause more pollution and additional harm to a community that is already suffering. It will further entrench the factory farming model that is harming people's health. At a minimum, our Department of Environmental Quality should require Smithfield. At a minimum, our Department of Environmental Quality should require Smithfield to adopt better technologies to lessen air and water pollution from the hog lagoons before making more money off of them. They need to stop, or at least reduce, the pollution that harms neighbors' health. When poor people on Medicaid suffer health problems, we all pay. In the long run, factory farming hurts vulnerable people and costs all of us. I urge DAQ to protect people, not corporations. Many politicians in North Carolina cater to Smithfield, but DEQ can and must do better. Please deny any permit for Align RNG unless and until Smithfield adopts better technologies to address threats to public health. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman, for the comments. Our next speaker will be Marion Chavious, to be followed by Ruby Bell.
This is Jamelle Melvin. I missed my call earlier, but I'm here to speak, and I just want to say, I want to say that if Smithfield can take 500 million to put this in place, they could have took that 500 million to clean up the hog waste. And with the, with the new way of proposing a renewable energy, it's gonna leave a lot of liquid waste from, that they still have to spray, so it does not solve the odor, odor water problem with the manure. So how can they add on top of that to the, um, those communities that will be affected? So please deny this.
All right, um, thank you, Ms. Melvin. I'm gonna move in once again. Marion Chavious will be the next speaker, followed by Ruby Bell.
Marion, if you're calling in from a telephone, please press star three to indicate to me so I can unmute your line.
Okay, we'll move on. The next speaker will be Ruby Bell, to be followed by Harriet Bryant.
Ruby, if you, if you're calling in from a telephone, if you would, please press star three so I can unmute your line.
All right, we're gonna move on from Ms. Bell. The next, and see if we can't come back to her later. Our next speaker will be Harriet Bryant, to be followed by Olivia Olsher. Ms. Bryant, are you available? All right, we'll see if we can't come back to her later. The next speaker will be Olivia Olsher, to be followed by Bertha Thompson.
Ms. Olsher, if you would, please press star three to indicate to me your phone line so I can unmute it, please.
We're going to move on from Ms. Olsher. The next speaker will be Bertha Thompson, to be followed by Pat Moore. Ms. Thompson, are you on the line? We'll move on from Ms. Thompson.
One second, I think.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Thompson, your line's been unmuted. You can go ahead and speak now.
Okay, um, I'm calling because I am in close proximity to where the Turkey operation is going to be, and I'm really concerned about it. I've learned quite a bit tonight. I haven't really had, had time to research all this, but, um, going down the road from my house, there are several hog parlors, one as close as a mile, and where they're talking about this operation is gonna be, it's within two or three miles of my home. And I'm concerned about the air quality because I'm a sarcoidosis patient, and I have COPD. And, um, as a result of what I'm thinking right now, I recommend that this pro, this project approval be postponed until, um, the people have opportunity to see how it's going to affect them and their neighborhood. Thank you for allowing me to talk.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, for your comments. Our next speaker will be Pat Moore, to be followed by Elaine Fason-Hunt.
Pat, if you are calling in from a telephone, please press star three so I may unmute your line. Okay. Pat, your line's been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your comments now.
I'm Pat Moore, 82 years old and a lifetime North Carolina resident. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my children and all children who face an unlivable future because of runaway climate chaos. We desperately need a rapid transition to clean renewable energy, but hog waste is not clean or renewable. This problem was created by Smithfield, who packed in this area so many hogs which pollute air and water and cause unbearable stench. They poison the neighbors, many of whom are black or brown or poor. Smithfield promised 20 years ago to fix this problem, but they were a long time finding for them the perfect solution, one that used the profit-making greenwashing skills of Dominion and Duke Energy, not to really address the hog waste, but just to pipe off the methane leaking all the way to gas pipelines. Smithfield, Duke, and Dominion partners in leaving hog waste untreated and making a nice profit on it. Once this scam is in place, changing it will be exceedingly difficult. People live near these hog waste lagoons. Many don't know whether the lagoons near their homes will be involved in this project. They have no idea where the pipelines will go. They deserve to know. These people matter. Our state's Department of Environmental Quality should not allow these toxic, dangerous hog lagoons to continue. To receive a permit, those who profit must first honor their word and clean up the pollution. Please, please protect the people who are suffering. Deny this permit.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Moore. We're going to move on to the next speaker, who will be Elaine Fason-Hunt, to be followed by Kendall Hale.
Elaine, if you're on the telephone, please press star three to indicate to me your line so I may unmute it, please. Thank you.
Ms. Hunt, are you on the line? All right, we'll move on and see if we can't find this hunt later. The next speaker will be Kendall Hale, to be followed by Lethia Lee.
Kendall, if you, if you are calling in from a telephone, please press star three so to indicate me your line so I may unmute it, please. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on from Kendall. The next speaker will be Lethia Lee, to be followed by Stephen Norris. Ms. Lee, are you on the line? Okay, we're gonna move on. I've just, let's see, is Stephen Norris on the line? The next speaker will be Stephen Norris, to be followed by Steve English. Mr. Norris? All right, we'll move on. The next speaker will be Steve English, to be followed by Mary Morrissey. Mr. English, are you on the line? Hello?
Hello?
Is this, is this Mr. English?
Yes, it is.
Go right ahead, sir.
I'm Dr. Steve English. I live in Charlotte. I believe climate chaos is the biggest age my children and grandchildren face, so I favor moving away from fossil fuels to renewable energy, but it's a sad joke to call electricity from hog feces and urine renewable. The dangerous methane that spews from Smithfield's hog lagoons is a problem Smithfield created by cramming hogs into huge factories and storing their waste in disgusting lagoons. Now, Smithfield wants to address one problem it has caused, methane, by adding technologies that will make it less likely the other serious problems caused by the lagoon, lagoon and sprayfield systems will ever be fixed. These lagoon and sprayfield systems are poisoning the black, Latino, and indigenous people of Sampson and Duplin Counties. Toxins like nitrates and ammonia causing exacerbate health disparities that have led to increased deaths from COVID. Horrible smells have destroyed home values, so folks can't even sell and escape their poisons, as one person living near a hog factory recently lamented. Who wants to move next to an area where you can't even go outside and breathe without vomiting? These black, Latino, and indigenous North Carolinians are stuck. I can only imagine how horrible that must be. Scientists say the one biggest impact North Carolina can expect as climate change worsens is more and heavier rainstorms. Just last week, Charlotte got the most rain ever for a single day in November. More flooding of these toxic hog lagoons is completely likely and foreseeable. DEQ has on notice that more floods are coming. Smithfield should not be allowed to add and profit from this new technology without addressing the huge threat of more and more wastewater pollution from hog lagoons. When the inevitable floods come, the people of North Carolina whose water is ruined will be justified in blaming the politicians who cater to Smithfield. Please, regulators, maintain your independence and protect people, not polluters. So-called bioenergy is a Band-Aid on the gaping wound Big Ag is causing to our climate, our air, our water, and our health. To avoid climate chaos, we must adopt regenerative agriculture that sequesters.
Dr. English, excuse me, Dr. English?
Please sit down.
Thank, thank you for your comments, Dr. English. Your, your two minutes are up. I'm going to move on to the next speaker, who is Mary Morrissey, to be followed by Brenda Atkinson.
Mary, your line has been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your comments now. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak again. As of 2017, North Carolina had almost 9 million hogs on about 2,400 farms. Pneusis, asthma, and other respiratory symptoms were associated with the hog farming concentrating animal feeding operations. In 2018, the North Carolina Medical Journal published an issue devoted to environmental health issues in North Carolina. Residents near hog farms were more likely to be African Americans and Native Americans, had lower, medium household incomes, and had higher death rates of all studied diseases. Event mortality, anemia, kidney disease, and tuberculosis were each higher in North Carolina communities with hog farms. So my whole take is, therefore, the concerned citizens of Duplin County is opposed to this permit and biogas projects that fail to meet environmentally superior technology standards and support projects that are, that, that not only comply with those standards, but also confer and economic, and economically benefit to the impacted communities. Clean air permit is the shared responsibility of the North Carolina Department of Environmental, Environmental Quality. We do not believe our livelihood should be at the expense of the residents who do not have a hog farm. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrissey. Our next speaker will be Brenda Atkinson, to be followed by Margaret Hall.
Brenda, if you have called using a telephone, please press star three so I may unmute your line.
Ms. Atkinson, are you on the line? Okay, we're going to move on. Perhaps we'll be able to get, get her later. The next speaker will be Margaret Hall, to be followed by Bobby Jones.
Margaret, if you're on the line, if you called in by telephone, please press star three so I may, I mute your line. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on from Ms. Hall. Our next speaker will be Bobby Jones, to be followed by Sam Hicks.
Hello?
Hello, is this, is that Mr. Jones?
It is.
Could you turn off your speakers? I believe we have some, an echo. Keep your, your mic on, but turn off your speakers. Can you hear me, Mr. Jones?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Go ahead.
Good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to share with you. My name is Bobby Jones. I'm with Down East Coal Ash Environment and Social Justice Coalition, Wayne County Resilience Hub. We are dedicated to protect the environment and advocating for the most frequently black, brown, and pool-white communities in eastern North Carolina that have been relegated to these toxic living situations that we're talking about largely as a result of corporate greed, corporate bullying like Dominion and Smithfield, and weak regulatory oversight like DEQ at times. We are committed to fighting for climate justice and ensuring community restoration and community resilience. Having done this for some years, I don't expect much more than what I've heard tonight from Dominion, from Smithfield, and from some of the farmers. They've got their eyes and their minds on the money, but I do expect more from what I've heard from DAQ. It is my understanding that DAQ is committed to reaching out to the community regarding situations that impact them. My question to you is, what have you done to, to, to notify the people of, of what's been planned for their communities? And most importantly, what have you done to ensure maximum community participation in this virtual, uh, of hearing that we're having? I ask this question because it is important that impacted communities be afforded the opportunity to engage it is important that impacted communities be afforded the opportunity to engage in this process so we can have a good outcome. Okay. Who are, are you representing here tonight, DAQ? The people that live in these communities, who have spent their lives here? Who, who have been here, who have been relegated to living under these conditions and will have to live under, under worse conditions if this is approved? Or do you represent-
Mr. Jones? I'm sorry, Mr. Jones. You, you're two minutes to speak, her. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, so didn't I lose some time at the beginning?
Uh, no, sir. Our timer was, was started at the appropriate time. I will encourage you at the end of the evening at an email, to give you an email address and a telephone number to include any further comments, any written, written comments. We want to make sure we, we've got several other people who need to speak, and we want to make sure that we give them an opportunity. Our next speaker will be Sam Hicks to be followed by Will Hendrick.
Sam, your line has been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your comments now.
Thank you. My name is Sam Hicks, and I'm with the Southern Environmental Law Center. I'd like to offer comments on the environmental justice implications of this project and DAQ's engagement with the public on the draft permit. The residents in Duplin and Sampson County are already overburdened with pollution and health impacts associated with industrial hog operations. Align's Grady Road project relies on the harmful lagoon and sprayfield system, which has numerous adverse impacts on the environment and public health, and disproportionate impacts on communities of color that live near industrial hog operations. Align is proposing to add yet another pollution source in these communities. Beneath Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, DAQ must assess and reduce or eliminate adverse cumulative impacts to communities of color wherever possible. DAQ must meet its obligations under Title VI of the Civil Rights Act in order to lawfully issue this permit. In February, DEQ adopted a public participation plan to better engage community members that will be impacted by permitting decisions. Through the plan, DEQ made a commitment to meaningfully engage communities which will be impacted by proposed projects. This commitment is especially important when a proposed project, like the Grady Road project, will have a significant impact on communities and the environment. We do appreciate DAQ reissuing the draft permit, holding a hearing on this matter, and providing impacted community members with multiple ways to submit comments. But DEQ must do more to engage impacted communities. DEQ provided inadequate notice for the first comment period, and DEQ then double booked this hearing with another public hearing on a similar matter. Although after our comments request, DEQ did change the date for this hearing. However, much more time was needed to ensure that community members could access this virtual hearing. Duplin and Sampson Counties have some of the lowest rates of high-speed internet adoption in the state, making this virtual hearing problematic. Even at this late stage, many community members remain without knowledge of this project or are unclear on its details. DEQ must do more to engage impacted communities about this project. We, we reiterate our request that DEQ permitting staff hold in-person meetings with safety precautions in place-
Mr. Hicks?
... in order to source feedback.
Mr. Hicks? Thank you for your, for your comments, Mr. Hicks. I just want to make, take a few minutes to make everyone aware that we rough, we have roughly 20 to 25 listed speakers to go through. And then I'd like to go back and try to call some of the names that I've called already that we, that perhaps are having problems calling in or problems unmuting, things of that nature. So I just want to give everybody a heads up as far as where we stand on that. I'm going to move on to the next speaker. The next speaker is Will Hendrick to be followed by Larry Baldwin.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Will Hendrick, and I'm with Waterkeeper Alliance. And I urge the agency to deny the draft permit because it fails to consider the full scope and impacts of the proposed project. First, DEQ has failed to consider the impacted community or respond to the disproportionate impact of this project on North Carolinians of color or low income. It's not, after all, just the conditioning facility that matters. Folks living near the 19 industrial hog operations supplying gas to this project will also suffer if this permit is approved. And we know that Native Americans, African Americans, Latinx Americans are all more likely than whites to live near industrial hog operations. We don't know which operations are involved here because DEQ hasn't even determined which farms will be connected, much less evaluated the impacts on or composition of surrounding communities, and that is unacceptable. Moreover, DEQ must consider pollution from every component of the project, including changes at those 19 hog operations that will entrench the lagoon and sprayfield system. Decades ago, our legislature identified five specific harms to our water, air, soils, and health caused by this system of swine waste management. Smithfield even agreed to invest in technology to address those problems. And now, decades later, the company is instead doubling down on a system it knows is broken. To justify doing so, the company points to a sixth problem, methane emissions contributing to climate change. But while we're aligned, our align focuses on turning this one problem into profit, the Grady Road project will exacerbate other longstanding environmental harms associated with the lagoon and sprayfield system. DEQ should not ignore this reality. Finally, DEQ must consider the cumulative impacts of the Grady Road projects and all other pollution sources in this area. Sampson and Duplin County residents are already burdened with pollution from Smithfield's hog operations, its feed mill, its processing plant, its truck traffic. And of course, animal agriculture isn't the only source of industrial pollution in these areas. DEQ should acknowledge the cumulative burden of pollution sources instead of choosing a piecemeal approach that sentences communities to death by a thousand individually permitted cuts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrick. Our next speaker will be Larry Baldwin to be followed by Steve Yost.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Larry Baldwin, I'm the Crystal Coast Waterkeeper and the advocacy director for White Oak New River Waterkeeper Alliance. The proposed Align RNG project by Smithfield Foods and Dominion Energy has all the usual earmarks of industry putting profits over people. For decades, it has been well documented and well known that the current method of hog waste disposal is negatively impacting our environment and communities. How do I know this? I've been doing this for 18 years. I'm taking thousands of samples that show this to be true. This project is just another ploy to perpetuate an outdated, archaic method of waste disposal while ignoring the impacts to the environment and communities. There's been a huge lack of transparency with this project. Much information has not been shared with the public or even the state. When do residents get their due consideration? What is really disturbing to me, in addition to the environment and the community impacts, are the mistruths about the real reason for calling this a renewable energy project, which is to perpetuate the current system, which Smithfield Foods vowed to take care of years ago. It's also about the, the economic benefits to farmers and the public, which they have not proven are even going to happen. Smithfield Foods and Dominion are only looking out for their pocketbooks. They have shown no indication for sharing their profits. Also, Smithfield Foods and Dominion Energy are misleading the people and the state by using existing microgrid facilities to illustrate what biogas projects will look like. They are not the same. We need renewable energy, but this is not the way. Smithfield Foods needs to, to adhere to their promise of doing away with the lagoon sprayfield system and not perpetuating it through this biogas project. It's time to stop the madness. It is time to oppose this project. Please do not permit it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. We're going to move on to the next speaker, who will be Steve Yost to be followed by Ryan Combs. Mr. Yost, are you on the line?
Mr. Yost, if you would, if you're calling in from a telephone, please press star three, so I may unmute your line.
We're going to move on from Mr. Yost. And in the hopes of being able to get back to him, the next speaker will be Ryan Combs to be followed by Will Stevens. Mr. Combs, are you available to speak? All right, we're going to move on from Mr. Combs. The next speaker will be Will Stevens. I'm sorry, is someone on the line?
Yeah, I believe Mr. Ryan just stepped in.
Okay.
Is this Ryan Combs?
This is Will Stevens.
Okay. Okay, that was going to be the next thing that I did, was to move on to Will Stevens. Mr. Stevens, go ahead and, go ahead and give us your comments, please.
My name is Will Stevens. I live in Charlotte, but I grew up visiting Sampson County often to see my grandparents. My aunt still lives there, and I sometimes visit her. And I'm friends with two of her caregivers who live nearby in Turkey. My friends in Turkey live right beside factory farms, but they do not know whether those farms will be part of this project. They do not know where the pipelines will go. They do not know how the project might affect them. The lack of transparency here is shocking. I don't believe such secrecy and lack of transparency would be tolerated in Charlotte where I live. I don't think it's fair to the people of Turkey, many of whom are people of color, who already experience health problems and are catching and dying of COVID at much higher rates than white people. During a pandemic, when folks can't get out into the community, can't go to church or other places to talk with one another, it's not the right time to approve a huge project that will emit more pollution in Turkey. I ask DAQ not to approve any kind of permit until all of the people who live close to the lagoons and pipelines, not just the upgrading facility, have been fully informed about the entire scope of the whole project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Our next speaker will be Erica Powell to be followed by Donna Chavis. Ms. Powell, are you available to speak? All right, we'll see if we can't come back to Ms. Powell. The next speaker will be Donna Chavis to be followed by Cynthia Satterfield.
Donna, if you're calling in from a telephone line, please press star three, so I may unmute your line.
All right, we're going to move on from Ms. Chavis. The next speaker will be Cynthia Satterfield to be followed by David McGowan.
Yes, thank you. This is, thank you for welcoming public comment on this project. This is Cynthia Satterfield. I'm the acting state director of the North Carolina Sierra Club. On behalf of the Sierra Club's 100,000 members and supporters in these impacted communities and across North Carolina, we ask DAQ to deny this permit first because the project will increase air pollution. Approval would mean new sulfur dioxide, carbon, nitrogen oxide, and more harmful emissions that would impair local air quality and contribute to climate change. Pipelines transporting biogas can also leak harmful greenhouse gas into the air. Second, we request denial because the application is incomplete, given the lack of information about where the pipeline would be, what farms it would be connected to, and the emissions at those farms. DAQ should consider pollution from the 19 industrial hog operations as well as the processing facility. And this has not yet been done. DAQ should also require that technology be put in place to protect the community and air at all hog operations connected with the project, and the draft permit doesn't address this. Third, we ask DAQ to deny the permit because the project would prolong the use of an antiquated and environmentally dangerous lagoon and sprayfield system of hog waste disposal and perpetuate environmental injustice in these North Carolina communities. Collecting methane from open cesspools props up a foul system of waste management that should have been discontinued years ago. And these systems spill millions of gallons of hog waste in the North Carolina waterways each year and create air quality problems for the people who live nearby, which we've heard many times prior. Clean, cleaner hog waste management systems exist, and residents of rural eastern North Carolina have endured the terrible odor and health threats of lagoon and sprayfield waste disposal for far too long. In short, decomposing hog waste cannot be the future of clean energy in North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Satterfield. Our next speaker will be David McGowan to be followed by John Lanier on behalf of Agriculture Commissioner Steve Trosser. Mr. McGowan, are you on the line? Mr. McGowan? All right, we're going to move on from Mr. McGowan. The next speaker will be John Lanier to be followed by Anita Cunningham. Mr. Lanier, are you on the line? Mr. Lanier? All right, we'll move on from Mr. Lanier. Our next speaker will be Anita Cunningham to be followed by Jefferson Curry. Ms. Cunningham, are you available?
Yes, hi. Hi.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Anita Cunningham, and I'm a member of the Robinson County Cooperative for Sustainability Development, and I'm a resident of Robinson County in eastern North Carolina. I am opposed to the issuing of an air quality permit for Align for the Grady Road project that is being proposed because I feel it would have a devastatingly harmful effect on my community's rivers, streams, and air because of anticipated biogas pollutants. I would ask for a consideration not to be given for this permit, not only because of the consequences of these pollutants for our communities, already disproportionately affected by disasters, both natural and unnatural, but also consideration because of already overburdened by the dirty industry that is now here and continues to be given opportunities to degrade our standard of living by breathing and polluting air and water. Because I live here, I'm already impacted by a lot of the dirty industry in this county. I know there are other cleaner technology options that may be better suited for a quality standard of living, and I hope that you take the responsibility to protect our right to breathe clean air, have clean water, and not suffer the harmful health effects that we've seen that comes from the production of dirty industry as is that Align Grady Road project is being proposed. Would you want your family and extended family to live in a community that is being sprayed with the feces of hogs onto crops and in the air and expose your children, grandchildren, or other, other family members to breathing the effects of this type of treatment? I think I already know the answer to this question. I'm one, but one of many residents and concerned citizens that are asking that further evaluation of the impacts of this project and the true impact it has on families' health and welfare and the sustainability of the communities for generations to come be reevaluated and looked at for other clean options. Thank you for your time and consent.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cunningham, for your comments. Our next speaker will be Jefferson Curry to be followed by Ellen Canavan.
Jefferson, Mr. Jefferson, your line's been unmuted. You can-
Can you hear me?
Make your comments now. Yes, go ahead.
Yes, we can, thank you.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. On August 3rd, 2020, Secretary Regan, in his statement on the permitting process, said that inclusiveness of communities of color and tribal concerns before a location is chosen said that inclusiveness of communities of color and tribal concerns before a location is chosen and well before a permit application is submitted is the optimum. Quote, "This process highlights the allegations of systemic racism that zoning and business-friendly regulations perpetuate against communities of color. An air permit should not be the first time a community becomes aware of a proposed facility." Sadly, nothing has changed. The air quality permit is still too often the first anyone hears about a project. And with other, as with other recent dirty industry projects in southeastern North Carolina, businesses have already spread the donation money around to grease the wheel while communities were not consulted and concerns are not addressed. And as usual, communities located closest to the proposed facilities are mostly people of color who have lower incomes than the rest of Sampson and Duplin Counties. With multiple sources of harmful air pollution and a plan that perpetuates the lagoon and sprayfield system, polluting local waterways, this facility will further contribute to the negative health factors that already make Sampson and Duplin County two of the worst in North Carolina. As the grandson of, my grandfather was born in Sampson. My grandmother's born in Duplin. My father's born in Sampson County. And as what I consider a son of Sampson County and Duplin County, I deeply miss how those counties are when I was young, before Smithfield and before Family Farms, like Gamehog Farming Corporations. If we could only just go back to 1910, when R.S. Curtis wrote in "Hog Raising in North Carolina" that providing plenty of pure water, sunshine, range, and green forage crops was how to raise a hog. It might be, it would definitely be a better day.
Mr. Curry, thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
Our next speaker will be Ellen Canavan, to be followed by Kemp Burdett.
Ellen, uh, you're, if you're on the, if you called in by telephone, please press star three, so I can unmute your line. Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, is this Ellen?
Is this Ellen?
Okay. Yes, it is. Okay.
Go, go right ahead, Ellen.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for the opportunity. The state of North Carolina allowed confined animal feeding operations to be set up in eastern North Carolina primarily in floodplains. Does anyone remember Hurricane Floyd with the appalling sight of all of those pigs drowning? Um, I am with NC SAVE, which is also NC Climate Save and NC Health Save because all of this is related. These practices of, of confined animal feeding operations, which cram thousands of sentient animals together, leading a totally unnatural life, which is so far from what they, they should be doing. They are breeding grounds for antibiotic-resistant bacteria. And we know that because it's happened before in North Carolina. So for 40 years, pig waste has been sprayed on the fields, affecting it, the groundwater, the land, the rivers, and the air. And why did Smithfield choose to locate here in the tiny little town of Tar Heel? Well, maybe it was because of lax environmental regulations or non-existent regulations, cheap labor. And I'm telling you a little bit about the company, what I have learned about them, and you cannot trust in them. Their intimidation of workers when the workers tried to unionize. It took them 15 years to finally get a union when other Smithfield facilities in other states were unionized. But here in North Carolina, they fought it tooth and nail. Scientists, as everybody else has mentioned, have studied the air and the water for years and found it harmful to the neighbors. It is an obnoxious smell, which I have, can vouch for, having been to Tar Heel. Increased asthma, uh, the, the death rate. It took, um, and then it took 30 years for residents to get legal representation and finally have their day in court. They brought a nuisance suit against Smithfield, which the plaintiffs won.
Miss Canavan, excuse me, Ms. Canavan.
Yeah.
We, we appreciate your comments. Your two minutes are up. Thank you for your comments today. Our next speaker will be Kemp Burdett, to be followed by Langston Pollak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, this is Mr. Burdett.
Yes, it is.
Go right ahead.
My name's Kemp Burdett. I'm a Cape Fear River Keeper, and I represent thousands of our members who live in the Cape Fear River Basin. The lagoon and sprayfield system, which this project will rely on to function, is without a doubt the leading threat to water quality of the Cape Fear River Basin. The only way to prevent the further degradation of water quality in the Cape Fear River Basin is to do what the industry promised to do over 20 years ago, and that is to end the lagoon and sprayfield system. This project will do the opposite. By permitting this biogas project, North Carolina would further entrench a system that is widely understood to be broken and give yet another handout to factory farms. In fact, covered lagoons may actually make water quality impacts worse by concentrating nutrients in covered lagoons, which still needs to be sprayed onto adjacent fields. Furthermore, this project, like the thousands of CAFOs across North Carolina, will have a disproportionate negative impact on communities of color who already get sick more often, stay sicker longer, and live shorter lives when compared to white residents because of pollution from CAFOs. Environmental justice communities in Duplin and Sampson Counties already deal with the highest concentration of hog farms on planet Earth and a poultry industry whose explosive growth is centered in the same two counties. They already have to deal with the slaughterhouses, rendering plants, feed mills, landfills, and thousands of trucks full of animals and their waste. This permit must consider these cumulative impacts if it is to have any hope of protecting environmental justice communities. Finally, this permit lacks the transparency needed for communities and stakeholders to evaluate it. How can citizens understand the impacts of a project of this size when the permit doesn't even disclose the locations of 19 CAFOs that will feed gas to the upgrading facility? How can impacts of the network of pipelines be understood if their routes are not even detailed in the permit? For these reasons, I strongly urge the Division of Air Quality to deny this permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burdett, for your comments. Our next speaker will be Langston Pollak, to be followed by Marvin Winstead Jr.
Mr. Langston, uh, your, your line has been, um, unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statements now.
Mr. Pollak, are you available? Mr. Pollak, are you on the line? All right, we're gonna move on from Mr. Pollak. The next speaker will be Marvin Winstead Jr., Junior, excuse me, to be followed by Claire Nagy Cato.
Um, Marvin, your phone, lo, I mean, I'm sorry, your line's been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your statement now.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, in the light of the hour, uh, I'm gonna defer to what Mr. Larry Baldwin and Mr. Kemp Burdett said. They very eloquently covered what I was gonna say this evening, uh, much better than I could say it. So I'll, I'll, everybody remember what those two gentlemen said. That's very-
What were the two gentlemen? I'm sorry, Mr. Baldwin and who else?
Larry Baldwin and Mr. Kemp Burdett.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
They covered all the points. Uh, they covered all the points I was gonna make.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, the next speaker will be Claire Nagy Cato, to be followed by Ashley Daniels.
Claire, uh, if you're calling in from a phone, go ahead and, um, make your, uh, please press star three, so I can unmute your line.
Ms. Cato, are you available? All right, we're gonna move on from Ms. Cato. The next speaker will be Ashley Daniels, to be followed by Angie Meyer.
Ashley, your line has been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your comments now. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for this public comment, um, this public meeting. Uh, my name is Ashley Daniels. I live in New Hanover County. I live downriver from the CAFO operations that take place in Duplin County and everything else that takes place in North Carolina. This process will solidify the role of lagoons in Duplin County and assure permanence to the antiquated and toxic log, uh, hog lagoons. So I had four questions, or actually, I think about five questions that came up for me that I hope come up for you all as well. Uh, the first one, how will air quality be impacted and even become toxic when these anaerobic lagoons flood in our next heavy hurricane? Since Align has petitioned to be exempt from safety regulations, if there were a leak or a break in the pipeline, what impact would that have on communities? What damage would be done? A 2013 study conducted by, uh, UNC Chapel Hill found that Mercer was in the homes of surrounding hog farms. Um, with the onset of COVID-19, recent studies have found that the disease can be transmitted between humans and animals. In what ways would this operation exasperate diseases like COVID-19? To what extent would covering the lagoons, uh, control emissions or fail to do so? And from what I understand, each year, Align's conditioning facility would emit 50 tons of sulfur dioxide and 10 tons of carbon monoxide. Who will these impact? Will these be at-risk communities? Will be, will these be black and brown communities? Um, and in what ways will they impact these communities? And I just wanna close by saying that, um, the same way that we were taught that, uh, people either have to choose between having, um, a strong economy or hell, having the conversation that we have to choose between having hog lagoons, or a green economy is, is also a lie. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels, for your comments. Our next speaker will be Angie Meyer, to be followed by Shatina Woodard.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, this is Ms. Meyer.
Yes, this is Angie Meyer.
Go right ahead, Ms. Meyer.
I'm Angie Meyer, and I'm commenting on behalf of the North Carolina Port Council. Let's all take a quick trip back to the year 2000, since so many other commenters have already done so. That was the year that the Smithfield Agreement was signed, which committed a total of $17.1 million towards finding environmentally superior technology. Of those technologies, there were only a couple of systems that met all five of the strict environmental performance criteria. Over the next 10 years, environmentalists exalted digest for methane capture and energy generation as an important tool in the toolbox. Some environmental groups even advocated for legislation that supported the development of new markets for swine manure and for the removal of regulatory obstacles in such markets. The on-farm systems that will be used on the participating farms in the Align project will be all but one of those five strict environmental criteria. But it's not good enough. Over the years, environmental advocates have moved the goalposts again and again. Tonight, you're hearing that significant progress is not good enough. It defies logic that any organization that advocates on behalf of the environment and most notably against climate change, would be so vigorously opposed to this project. This project will not create new emissions. It will destroy emissions. Tonight, opponents have told us that they would prefer all or nothing. And why? Because it isn't the system they wanted it to be? Or because it's not painful enough for the farmers to employ? I urge DAQ to grant this air permit because it's good for eastern North Carolina. Further, I encourage DAQ to find ways to encourage the development of renewable natural gas from all sources, whether swine, landfill, or municipal waste refineries. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Meyer. Our next speaker will be Shatina Woodard, to be followed by Nicholas Woodard.
Shatina, if you're on the, if you have called in by phone, if you, please, if you would, please press star three, so I can unmute your line. Thank you. I believe this is her.
Okay.
Shatina, your line has been unmuted, so you can go ahead and make your comments now. Okay, we'll have to move on.
Okay, all right. All right, the next speaker will be Nicholas Woodard, to be followed by John Lanier. Mr. Woodard, are you available?
Hello?
Hello, is this Mr. Woodard?
Yeah, this is Mr. Woodard.
Yeah, Nicholas Woodard, go ahead and, uh, make your comments, please.
Yes, so I think that, um, they should, um, abolish that act because, um, we'll, uh, our black neighborhoods have been here for so long and we have been dealing with these hogs for about 30 years and anything that y'all dealing hog is always on the bad end of what we, uh, what we need for our community. I think that, uh, um, having gas running through our communities should not be omitted. I think that we should also have a meeting and have everybody in that community to vote on what they want in their community. And I think that, uh, it's the wrong idea for y'all to try to make gas out of this here, uh, hog manure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Pardon me just a moment. Our next speaker will be John Lanier, to be followed by Evelyn Woodard.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. This is Mr. Lanier?
This is John Lanier. Third, third time's the charm.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lanier.
Yes, thank you. And so I'm, I'm John Lanier. I'm the Assistant General Counsel for the Department of Agriculture. I'll just read a prepared statement from our Commissioner Steve Troxler. Uh, good evening. My name is Steve Troxler, and I have the great honor of serving North Carolina as the Commissioner of Agriculture. Tonight, I'd like to express my support for renewable natural gas. It is one of the most exciting innovations I've seen in decades, and I urge NC DEQ to support Align RNG as they work to bring renewable natural gas to North Carolina. The benefits of this new technology are incredibly powerful. Fewer emissions from our farm, from our farms, more clean energy for consumers, and new income for farm, for family farmers. Now, that's what I call a win-win-win. With this single technology, farmers can turn the substantial cost of manure management into a new revenue stream to keep their farms afloat for years to come. By making a modest investment in new infrastructure on the farm, farmers can share in long-term income from the sale of the gas. At the same time, it allows farmers to reduce their environmental footprint. Renewable natural gas is the cleanest energy source in the United States. In fact, the renewable natural gas process captures 25 times more greenhouse gas emissions from farms than are emitted when the gas is used by consumers. In fact, over the next 10 years, the project developed by Dominion and Smithfield in North Carolina and elsewhere around the country will reduce greenhouse gas emissions by the same amount each year as removing- each year as removing 500,000 cars from our roadways or planting 40 million new trees. As a lifelong conservationist, I'm thrilled to support such a transformational initiative. Renewable natural gas represents an incredible opportunity for North Carolina. It represents exactly the kind of innovation and outside-the-box thinking we need to make our farms and our energy economy sustainable in the 21st century. I urge NCDEQ to embrace renewable natural gas and grant Align RNG the air permit it needs to build its first project in North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier. Our next speaker will be Evelyn Woodard, to be followed by Brenda Isbell.
Evelyn, your line has been, I'm sorry, please press star three, so I may unmute your line. Thank you. I believe this is Evelyn. Go ahead.
Hello, is this Ms. Evelyn Woodard?
Yes, it is.
Go right ahead, ma'am.
Yes, my greatest concern is that we're already dealing with the hog farm itself. And to bring in this stuff to make gas, that's another problem. I think it should be deleted.
All right. Any other comments, Ms. Woodard?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you for your comments this evening. All right, our next speaker will be Brenda Isbell, to be followed by Mary Carney.
Brenda, if you are calling in by telephone, please press star three, so I can unmute your line. Thank you.
Mrs. Isbell, are you on the line? All right, we're going to move on. The next speaker will be Mary Carney, to be followed by Tally Saunders.
Mary, if you're calling in from a telephone, please press star three to indicate, so I may unmute your line. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on from Ms. Carney. The next speaker will be Tally Saunders, to be followed by Tommy Carr. Hello? Is someone on the line? All right. We're going to move on from Tally Saunders. The next speaker will be Tommy Carr, to be followed by Roger Stringfield. Mr. Carr, are you on the line? All right, we're going to move on from Mr. Carr. The next speaker will be Roger Stringfield, to be followed by Elsie Herring. Mr. Stringfield, are you on the line? All right, we'll be moving on. The next speaker will be Elsie Herring, to be followed by Charles and Flora Frazier. Ms. Herring, are you on the line? All right, we're going to move on. The next speaker will be Charles and Flora Frazier, to be followed by Jeff Jones. Mr. and Mrs. Frazier, are you on the line?
This could, this person could be it. Is this either Charles or Jeff Jones?
Hello, is someone on the line? All right, I'm going to call on Jeff Jones before I go through the names that we couldn't reach one more time very quickly. Mr. Jones, are you on the line?
You have to press star three to indicate, so I can see your line pop up, so I can unmute it.
All right, we're going to move on. I'm going to, we've got a few people that we were not able to reach, so I'm going to call these names. I'm going to call these names briefly to see if perhaps they're still on the line, and then we'll be wrapping up the public hearing. Is Karen Malam on the line? Hello? All right, moving on, is Marlo Ivy Vaughn on the line? All right, moving on. Omega and Brenda Wilson, are you on the line?
Hey, Elsie, this is me.
Hello? Hello? Mr. Wilson? All right, I'll move on. Is Mr., is Terrell Nichols on the line?
Again, you have to press star three, so I know to unmute your line.
All right, I'll move on. Is Dorian Annell Line on the line? All right, I'll move on again. Is Janet Pfeiffer on the line? Moving on, is Michelle Jacobs on the line? Okay, moving on, is Brenda Hatch on the line? Moving on, is Elsa Enstrom on the line? Okay, I'll move on again. Is Kim Porter on the line? Okay, I'll move on. Is Albert Corbett on the line? Moving on, is Suzanne Buchamel on the line?
Hello?
Hello? Who's speaking? Hello?
Hello?
Hello, who's speaking?
Hello?
I'm going to go ahead and mute this person if that's
Okay. Moving on, is Connie Raper on the line? All right, is Stephen Norris on the line? Moving on, is Jimmy Melvin on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line.
Mr. Melvin, very good. You've got two minutes to make your comments, sir. Go right ahead.
Okay, I'm Reverend Jimmy Melvin of the Mount Zion Emezzan Church in the Delaware Community on Hillbilly Road. In the early spring, a water inspector came to the church and tested our water quality. He informed us that we had to immediately shut our water off if we could not even use it to wash our hands. We had to end up paying $3,500 to have a ground well dug deep enough so that our water would pass the test without nitrogen in it. We had to go down about 225 feet. My church is located off Taylor Bridge Road in Magnolia, North Carolina, on the Taylor Bridge Highway, then the Union School District. According to news articles, we may be impacted by pipelines that would be running through Sampson County, Sampson-Duplin County. We experience some problems with hog waste goo that is near our church, and now we may have to deal with a pipeline that carries hog waste fuel. In addition to that, the community has been impacted by hurricanes and heavy rain. I will align, make sure that those pipelines are not impacted by flooding caused by hurricanes and heavy rain. I hope that everyone that's traveling through the county would notice that all white steepers on top of churches are at a different color because of the spraying of hog waste and stuff. Just notice it sometime. Take a ride through there and notice. And I oppose that. I think it should be consideration for the citizens and the ones impacted by it. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Melvin, for your comments. All right, I'm going to continue to move on. Is John Brooks on the line? Hello? All right, moving on, is Marion Chavis on the line? All right, moving on, is Ruby Bell on the line? Moving on, is Harriet Bryant on the line? Harriet Bryant. All right, moving on, is Olivia Olsher on the line? Last name Olsher. Okay. Is Langston Pollock on the line? Langston Pollock.
Langston, your line has been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your comments now.
Mr. Pollock? Mr. Pollock? Can you hear me? Hello, Mr. Pollock? All right, I'm going to move on. Is Elaine Fason Hunt on the line? Moving on, is Kendall Hale on the line? Moving on, is Lithia Lee on the line? Lithia Lee. Moving on, is Brenda Atkinson on the line? Okay, moving on, is Margaret Hall on the line? Moving on, is Steve Yost on the line? Mr. Yost, are you on the line? Would you like to comment? Moving on, is Ryan Combs on the line? Moving on, is Erica Powell on the line? Erica Powell. Moving on, is Donna Chavis on the line? Donna Chavis. All right. Moving on, is David McGowan on the line? David McGowan. Moving on, Mr. Pollock, Mr. Langston Pollock, are you on the line?
And your line has been unmuted, so your line is open. So if you would unmute yourself, and you can make your comments.
Mr. Pollock? Hello, Mr. Pollock? All right, moving on, is Marvin Winstead on the line? Okay, moving on, is Claire Nagy Cato on the line? Claire Nagy Cato. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that is this evening's hearing. Let me just, that is all the names that I have. If you did not, hello? Hello?
May I speak?
Yes, I'm sorry. Who is this speaking?
This is Jeff Jones.
Jeff Jones, okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones. We called you earlier, and you didn't respond. Go right ahead.
I tried to respond on the computer, and that didn't work, so I decided to call in, and I didn't hear my name a second time. So here I am.
Great. Go right ahead, Mr. Jones.
Yes, so I am Reverend Jeff Jones. I am a minister in North Carolina. I'm calling to voice my serious concern about the biogas proposal that is before you. It surprised me that I have not one, not two, but three serious concerns, each of which is well-established and well-documented. First, I am concerned about the environmental impact of this proposal. I'm concerned about the impact on the land and the environmental degradation of both air and water quality in the surrounding areas. The risks that we are being asked to take on are simply unconscionable when we have solar and wind renewable energy resources that are available now, if we would only be willing to make the investment. Second, I'm deeply troubled that this proposal disproportionately affects low-income communities and communities of color. This is so well-documented that I am at a loss to understand why we continue to engage in environmental racism and these degrading forms of economic injustice on communities that have the least. Finally, I'm deeply troubled with the abuse, the torture, and the suffering that factory farms inflict on sentient beings in order to increase profitability. I find immeasurable wisdom in the words of Jesus, who I believe would say to you tonight, "As you do unto the least of these, you do unto me." In summary, if you approve this biogas proposal, I believe you are facilitating a proposal that is short-sighted, harmful, and unethical. I respectfully urge you to oppose it, and I've heard so many speak to that tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Reverend Jones, for your comments.
Thank you.
All right. It is now 10:02. It is now 10:02. That is all the names that I have who have pre-registered to speak. If you did not register to speak, but still want to provide comments on the issuance of an air quality permit for Align RNG, remember that there are several other ways to provide comments until the end of the comment period on November 20th, 2020, at 5:00 PM. You can call 919-707-8714 and leave a voicemail message with your first and last name, who you, whom you are representing, and state your comments on the proposed permit. You can also provide written comments until the comment period ends to the following email address. The email address is daq公眾comment@ncdnr.gov with Align RNG in the subject line. You can mail written comments to the address listed on the public notice. And finally, you can fax the written comments to the following fax number, Please address it to Mr. Dean Carroll, C-A-R-R-O-L-L. I would like to thank everyone for your attendance this evening and for your entrance, interest in this virtual public hearing process. Based on the information received during tonight's virtual public hearing and comments received throughout the comment period, I will make a recommendation to the Director of the Division of Air Quality for his consideration in making a final decision on whether to issue the air quality permit to Align RNG. Again, I thank you for your cooperation and attendance on this public hearing and interest, in interest in the air quality permitting process. This public hearing is now adjourned.